Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
He is online tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Dibala.
Present.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember.
I see him.
Council, I think they're not hearing us. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sirci.
Here.
All right. Councilmember Siemens, can you hear us? I don't know if he can hear us. Maybe somebody can text him and see if we can get his audio working. Good evening, everyone. Regarding our agenda this evening, we had one change that we made earlier. Request for council support for the NED grant applications and then go into our other two work sessions. Looking forward at our meetings next week since June 29th is the fifth Wednesday of the month. We will not be meeting on Monday is July 4th. City offices and facilities will be closed on July 3rd and July 4th for the holiday. We will resume our meetings on Wednesday, July 6th at 7:30 PM. That night, we'll have a proclamation for the 25th anniversary of Tacoma Park unification that actually will take place on July 1st. That is the anniversary. Our voting item that evening will be a resolution supporting the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund grant applications. Our work sessions that night tentatively will have a discussion of possible election code amendments and appointments to boards and committees. Then on Wednesday, July 13th, we'll have a resolution providing for appointments to boards and committees and reappointments, tentatively a presentation of library bids and an FY23 budget amendment number one. Then on Wednesday, July 20th, excuse me, a work session, a voting session will be tentatively a single reading ordinance of warning a contract for library construction and a first reading ordinance approving FY23 budget amendment number one. Our work sessions that night tentatively is a procurement item on Tree Kennedy pilot contract, a work session on rental inspection contract with Montgomery County, youth council appointments, appointment to the nuclear free Tacoma Park Committee, tentatively a minor master update and tentatively our procurement contract for a direct cash assistance program. And then we'll have a meeting on Wednesday, July 27th. And depending on if we get all the work done that we do and get everything voted on, that will be our last minute meeting for the summer recess or we will have a meeting on August 3rd. All right, moving forward, let's see. We'll first start with public comments this evening on voting items. Our first voting item is a resolution approving a submission of MML legislative action request. Any public comments on that? Okay, our next voting item is a single reading ordinance approving a contract for vegetation maintenance. Any comments on that? Seeing none, then we'll move to just general public comments. Anyone who has general public comments in the auditorium, please come to the podium, state your name and where you live in the city and you have three minutes.
Hi, I think we agreed. I could have five minutes.
I think you spoke with the city clerk, okay?
Right.
Correct, yes. Five minutes.
Great. Hello, everyone. My name is Brendan Smith. I'm a Ward III city resident, cities arts humanities coordinator and the president of American Federation of State, County and Local Municipal Employees Local 3399, which represents most city of Tacoma Park employees. I'm here tonight to share some concerns from our union members and some city residents about a recent arbitration involving a city employee and a pattern of mistreatment of city employees by the city manager. I agree with the mayor to do this presentation during the public comments because you have a long agenda, but I'm hoping you'll address these issues during the council comments and develop a plan of action. In the recent arbitration, city manager Jamal Fox wasted more than $33,000 in city taxpayer funds on legal fees to fight a city employee's simple request for six days of telework, which would have cost the city nothing. Employee was working from home yet was still required to use her limited sick time because her young daughter had to quarantine after being exposed to COVID-19 twice in the city's own aftercare program here in this building. Mr. Fox denied her request for six days of telework even though the city's telework policy permits extensions of telework for extenuating circumstances. Out of May 24th ruling, the independent arbitrator ruled against the city on all counts in a case brought by AFSCME to defend the city employee. In his ruling, arbitrator Homer LaRue found that Mr. Fox's denial of the employee's telework request was, quote, unreasonable and had violated AFSCME's collective bargaining agreement and the city's own telework policy. Six days of comp time must be paid to the employee. It took several months of public records requests, but I was able to obtain copies of the city's legal bills for the arbitration, which added up to $29,140 from January to April this year, just for this arbitration. The hourly rate for Garrett Wozniak, who represents the city employment issues, jumped from his usual $250 per hour rate to a staggering $390 per hour for his work on this arbitration. City attorney Skip Cornbrooks also redacted large sections of the bills, which conceals details about how city funds were spent. Under our collective bargaining agreement, an arbitration is the only permitted route to appeal the city manager's denial of an employee grievance. We had no desire to pursue sort of this lengthy costly process, but the city manager forced our hand. Arbitrator's fee also must be split between the two sides even when AFSCME wins a case. And as a result, the city had to pay $4,387 for half of the arbitrator's fee and AFSCME had to pay the same amount from our small budget. This arbitration also consumed countless hours of staff time across four city departments for employees, supervisors and department directors who had to deal with this needless arbitration. Since Mr. Fox began work as city manager last August, he's denied every grievance filed by an AFSCME member over every issue. A longtime custodian was fired for taking a box of diapers from a donation area to help a relative in need. When he was told that wasn't allowed, he returned the unopened box, but Mr. Fox still fired him anyway. This is a really troubling pattern where the city manager doesn't respect city employees' rights. He hasn't shown any compassion or cooperation with city employees during some very difficult times as the pandemic continues and skyrocketing inflation cuts into already low wages. If the council approved the legal fees for this arbitration behind closed doors, we'd like to know the justification for that. We're urging the council to adopt a new policy where the council would be required to approve any future funds spent for arbitrations or the city manager's denial of an employee grievance would be reversed. The council often must approve contracts for over $30,000, so the same level of oversight is needed here. If you're not willing to take that action, we'd like to know what action you are willing to take to make sure these types of abuses don't occur again. For anybody watching, there's more info about this case along with copies of the legal bills and the arbitrator's ruling on our website at helptacomaarkworkers.org. I'm happy to answer any questions during the council comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for joining us this evening. Are there any other public comments tonight?
Thank you, everybody, for being here and thank you for your testimony. It's sad that a person was fired for borrowing some diapers, but anyways, in July 2015, I started an organization later called Parents of Special Needs Adults. And quite a few of you have come to our meetings, Casey most recently, and you all said, oh, we like you, blah, 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 but nothing has been done, nothing, especially housing. My son, who was born in Tacoma Park, I should give you a little bit about our little family. My son is, you say you like immigrants. My son is a son, only son of a Kenyan immigrant who was shot in the head and left to die and has severe mental capacities. You won't help his son. My son is going to end up living on the street in a few years because I can barely take care of him now and I can barely take care of myself. I'm 74 right now. And there are other people with similar woes, and I hate to beg, but hey, when your disability affects your brain, you're the lowest of the low. And we have given you an opportunity to unite people because we come in all colors, races, nationalities, sexes, you name it. We are a variety. When you talk about people diversity, we are it. And my son couldn't be more diverse and I'm really sad. And I see our house is deteriorating. We just have a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house. And the people around us have lots of money evidently because they're building their houses up and making them fancy. And next door neighbor is a renter temporarily there because they're getting their house renovated. I mean, we could never afford that, but these are the people moving in. I don't know where they get this money, but you know, I retired as a GS7 in the federal government and I don't get that much of a retirement. I'm sorry. But thank you all for coming to our meetings. Please do something and don't forget us. Please don't forget us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Maturi. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to council comments. We did not have any online comments sign up tonight. Who would like to start with council comments? Councilmember Siemens. We cannot hear Councilmember Siemens.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, now we can hear you.
I just wanted to say I'm present. I understand I missed the audio portion of the roll call.
Okay.
I am here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Next, I have Councilmember Smith.
I just want to thank all the residents that attended the virtual Ward 5 meeting yesterday. We will have another meeting in September. The meeting was recorded, so if you're on the Ward 5 list server, you can get access to it. The meeting focused on the city's budget and some of the difficult decisions residents are going to have to make for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Any other? Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, thank you. I just want to put a plug in for city committees. And as you heard, in a few weeks, we'll be making appointments to a bunch of different committees. So take the opportunity to sign up, to apply to work on any of a number of groups that are out there. I also wanted to put in a plug for registering to vote by June 28th. I've been getting a lot of questions. This is not the city election. The city election is nonpartisan. It's in November. This is a primary for state and county offices. Nevertheless, it's an opportunity for everyone in Tacoma Park to exercise their right to vote. And if you're new in town and you need to register, you need to do it by June 28th. I'm assuming that the city manager or the mayor will talk about Pride Day coming up this weekend. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sirci.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Couple of quick announcements. The first is the upcoming meeting on sidewalks and traffic calming design at Hopewell, Kentland and Larch Avenues. That will be happening tomorrow. Weather pending. I'm just going to triple check with Daryl about that at 7:00 PM. And so it will be a bit of a walking tour. And so we are scheduled to start at the corner of Kentland Avenue in Hopewell. Also just want to let folks know that there was a series of open houses regarding the New Hampshire Avenue flash bus rapid transit that happened over a couple of, there was a few sessions, June 15th, June 16th and June 18th. If you are not able to attend, that's fine. Those sessions will eventually be posted onto the Montgomery County Department of Transportation website. And the sessions that are the meetings that were already held with the corridor advisory committee is posted as well. So if you're interested in learning more about the BRT along New Hampshire Avenue, definitely want to encourage people to check out that website. And last but not least, Summer Mercado is fastly approaching. So just want to remind folks to come out and enjoy the Summer Mercado. It is this Saturday from 1 until 6 on Ann Street and University Boulevard. So again, just want to encourage people to come out and I think those are all of the reminders I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you, and thank you to the public commenters tonight. I just have two very brief updates. One is that I was just on and had to jump off of for this meeting, the DDOT meeting related to the Eastern Avenue Rehabilitation Project from New Hampshire Avenue to Whittier. And there were some good updates there. That meeting is recorded, so if anyone missed it, that will be posted on the DDOT website. Right now, the most immediate thing that looks like it's happening is there will be this year an update of the intersection at Sligo Mill and Eastern with a signal installed there as well as some pedestrian improvements. And then longer term, the whole corridor project is scheduled to start pending funding in 2026. And so there were some great questions raised during the meeting related to the detours that might be anticipated during the project and the impact on the city streets during that time, as well as what the bike infrastructure will be on Eastern Avenue. There looks like right now there'll be some charros in the project, which is a little less than what the initial hope had been in terms of bike infrastructure. And so that was the discussion when I had to jump off of the call, but I'm looking forward to listening to the recording and encourage others to do so as well. And the other update I have is that last night, there was a meeting with Public Works and residents on Sligo Mill related to a sidewalk request there. So I want to thank Public Works for their work on that. We're working towards getting the next phase of plans in place and then there'll be another neighborhood discussion about those plans and we'll look at which side of the street the sidewalk would likely be installed on. But I think that's a really important place where a sidewalk is very needed for safety right now. And as we're looking ahead to some of the detours on Eastern Avenue in the future, will be even more critical. So looking forward to the movement on that project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and as Councilmember Siemens said, I also couldn't hear at the beginning. So I apologize for not saying that I was here during the roll call. It seemed to come on when the mayor was describing the agenda for the future meeting. So I am here and I'm connecting remotely because over the weekend, I was with somebody who then I learned a couple of days later had tested positive for COVID. I don't have any symptoms, but it just seemed like it would be better to not be around everybody in a closed space for several hours. So hopefully by the weekend, that will all have gone away. And just two things I wanted to mention. One, Councilmember Dibala did mention it. The Old Town Business Association is sponsoring the rescheduled, have been postponed because of inclement weather. The rescheduled Pride Day is Sunday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. A lot of it's happening around the streetery in Old Town, but there's also going to be a kids' parade and other events as well. And you can go to the Old Town Business Association website to get that information. And the only other thing I wanted to mention was we did have in the recent meeting a presentation from the urban forest manager, Mr. Frye, which included his initial draft of the master plan, the longer-term forest management plan for the city, which is something that the council had called for when we did a major redraft of the ordinance and also adopted or approved the resolution calling for a more thoroughgoing, comprehensive forest management plan compared to what we've had previously. And that draft plan is now posted on the city website. And Mr. Frye has indicated that he's interested in and welcomes receiving comments from residents. And so you can go to the website and find that he's asked for comments by July 17th. I don't know if that's an absolutely firm deadline, but I encourage anybody who's interested in this topic to go ahead and look at the plan and submit that information. And if you can't find it, feel free to contact me and I will pass it along. I think it might have been in my blog for this week as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. A couple of announcements. We talked about Pride already. Want to thank the Village of Tacoma Park for their spring fling at the VFW on Saturday. It was a nice event and just thank all the volunteers there for all they do. I was also able to attend the Washington Adventist University inaugural Juneteenth event this year. And that was a great event. They had a storyteller who portrayed Harriet Tubman and it was a very powerful event. The other announcement I have is that if you are driving along Piney Branch in Philadelphia, you may notice something new. The flex dividers have been finally put in after many months of working with SHA to get those in, and I want to thank the neighbors who live in that area for their continued advocacy on that and hopefully it will improve safety in that intersection. And finally, I just want to say thank you to the commentators tonight, particularly Mr. Smith. You know, we take these issues that you've raised very seriously and all of us are very committed to developing a process and looking at how we can communicate effectively. As you know, the council has been looking at a facilitator to help look at some of the issues that you all have raised over the last few months and I'm hopeful that that process will begin soon. So thank you for coming this evening and raising those issues. And with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only announcement I'll make is on Monday, June 27th at 7:00 PM here in the community center, the public space community meeting about the open space management plan. And staff will be providing and going over what we've learned so far, as well as the vision and goals and guidance on how the public space will be used and maintained here in Tacoma Park. So that's going to be this Monday, 7:00 PM here in the community center.
Thank you. All right, we'll move now to our voting session. The first item is a resolution approving submission of MML legislative action requests. We had a work session last week where we selected the three areas for the action request. And there was a slight revision from last week regarding the Vision Zero goals and pedestrian safety. Does the city manager have any other comments on this? So I think we're good to go on this. Would someone like to move the resolution?
So move.
Councilmember Smith, move. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, Councilmember Kovar, as you're, is that a new hand or an old hand? Okay. Any comments, questions? Seeing none?
I have one question. On the second bullet, yes, the second bullet. We're assisting municipality, we want to support legislation that assists municipalities with housing and community development issues. This is not an exhaustive list. This is examples of things we know are coming up, correct? In which case, I think it would help to say, by such legislation as. So allowing for the possibility that there might be other proposals. Okay, I can see from everyone's reaction that's not going to be too well.
This is the same language we submitted last year, so I'm just reading it over to see what you would like to change.
Okay. If that's the same language, if that's the identical language to next to last year, I withdraw it.
Okay.
Never mind that.
I'm pretty sure it is. I think we just cut and paste it. I'm looking at the city clerk. We could add something, though. I'm looking.
Yeah, just by, by such as, is all what I was thinking. It's not.
Oh, so you say promoting legislation. Such as, yeah, so. Or sources of funding.
Right.
All right. Councilmember Smith, when she moved that, do you have any? It's fine. It's a friendly amendment. We'll add such as. Any other questions or comments? Okay, since we have two council members online tonight, why don't we call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Sirci.
I, Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, the next is a single reading ordinance approving a contract for vegetation maintenance. We discussed that last week as well. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilwoman Sirci, second, Councilwoman Dibala, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Sirci.
I, Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, that concludes our voting session tonight. We will begin our work sessions and the first work session is a request for council support for, excuse me, of NED grant applications of the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Grant Fund, and I will turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have acting director David Eubanks is going to walk us through this presentation.
Good evening, council. Before you, you have three resolutions for the um uh, if you so choose to act, support for um three grant applications from the Housing and Community Development Department for the National Capital Strategic Economic Development uh Fund. And so the request from council is uh to approve the three resolutions supporting the NED grants. Um, and I'm going to just remind you all kind of the purpose of NED grants. Um, you all are very familiar, the last round of applications from HCD was just last year. But um just to, to provide a refresher, the uh seven million that's allocated for this year is purposed to uh support commercial and residential activities and development projects. These funds are to be focused in Prince George's County and Montgomery County, um and specifically sustainable communities of which uh the city of Tacoma Park is one. Um, and these dollars are primarily used for capital projects and operations. Uh, mostly capital projects, a very, very limited portion of the money that's available um can be used for operations. Just to remind you of some recent projects, um, the ones that are probably at the forefront of your mind, sixty-five thirty um in sixty-six hundred New Hampshire Avenue, um, those were acquisition projects, uh five hundred thousand dollars apiece. Um, that money is going out of the door uh early July, um, or late July, early August. Uh, the Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School Acquisition was a project where we requested about, I believe the request was about five hundred thousand dollars and we got about two hundred thousand dollars in support. The Affordable Home Ownership Opportunities Fund, that five hundred thousand dollars was used to support both the uh Garland Avenue um redevelopment as well as the Lincoln Avenue redevelopment. Um, so it was uh, the, the purpose of that was to increase the city's homeownership um to affordable and moderate income individuals. And then lastly, on the, the, the list here is the Washington-Monclachlan uh senior housing feasibility study and eventual repair. Uh, and that total was about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the, the city and HCD really like to pursue NED grants because it extends what the city is capable of doing without using the city's coffers to, to fund development projects um and city initiatives. And so um the projects that we are interested in supporting and submitting grant applications for this year are uh first, you know, a, a really interesting one, um, and the first of its type in the city. That's the uh one hundred and twelve Leland Avenue um acquisition by tenant association. So this tenant association has gone through the city's uh tenant opportunity to purchase process um and seemingly is successful. They uh anticipate closing uh at the end of July, early August. Um, and so the structure of this uh model of acquisition is really a first of, of its kind. This is a limited equity co-op. Um, and as a, as a, just a short description of what that means, essentially uh the building is owned in common um by all of the, the households of the fifteen units. Um, but the share value of each individual household is limited by their income. Um, and so the goal is to limit the amount of money that anybody has to pay for uh the, the, the rent, if you will, as well as housing operations, which are utilities and property taxes to thirty percent of their, their income, um, which is quite amazing. And so the more money you make, the more money you pay, but that's all kind of agreed upon uh amongst all the tenants. Um, and so it's, it's a really um equitable model for, for development um and, and acquisition for low and moderate income individuals. Um, and so the city and HCD are very happy to support um the tenant, tenant association via the, the grant application. And so the, the request is uh three hundred thousand dollars. Now, this is not for the acquisition, but for construction. Uh, and so the acquisition, they've actually managed to cobble together their own uh financing, mostly uh alone um from City First and Montgomery County Green Bank. Uh, the money that we are contributing via the NED grant is for construction post, post-acquisition. The tenant association did a feasibility study some time ago. Um, and they expect the total renovation cost to be about four million dollars. And so uh the NED grant is a very, very small portion of that. Um, but again, very, very anxious to support the Leland Tenant Association there. Uh, related is the tenant opportunity to purchase support fund. Um, via the Leland uh process, as well as kind of observing other um opportunities uh that tenant associations have pursued. Uh, HCD has realized that we don't really provide one financial support um and don't often provide the technical support that these kind of tenant associations need. And so um the tenant opportunity to purchase support fund is going to be funding specifically for pre-acquisition tenant uh um technical assistance, uh post-acquisition tech, technical assistance, as well as some financing uh for both acquisition and for construction. And then lastly, this is a, one of the projects that you are probably most familiar with. If you recall, you all um approved the uh use of ARPA money, five hundred thousand dollars for uh the renovation of multifamily uh cooperative and condo buildings. Um, and so this is an extension of that. This would obviously, if we receive the four, five hundred thousand dollars, uh increase the capacity of that fund to a, to a million. Um, and so this is just an expansion of an existing program. The total request from HCD to the state would be one point three million dollars. And um in terms of council priorities, all three of these really hit on two council priorities. Uh, livable community for all and improved equity uh qual, equitable quality of life. And so I'll stop there and take any questions, comments, or concerns.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, can we minimize so I can see Councilmember Siemens and Kovar in case they have questions? Anyone? Councilmember Kovar has a question, and then Councilmember Siemens. But now I can't see them.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I just had one question. I think all the proposals are meritorious and.
In line with the priorities that we've established, as, as you just noted. The one thing I was wondering about is whether as a strategy applying for multiple grants as opposed to just one is helpful or, or how that strategy sort of works out because, you know, there's a limited amount of money. I think it's, I think the material said there was seven million dollars for the whole state. If we ask for three, are we more likely to get one, or if uh we ask for uh you know, is it, can it be seen as asking for, for too many and you end up maybe just getting a little bit in each one, which isn't really enough as opposed to getting everything you want at once? So just some thoughts on that would be, would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we did have the opportunity to speak to um, I believe uh her title is, is Regional Director um at HCD. Uh, she oversees uh the, the, a lot of our grant programs, but this one in particular. And we talked about the types of projects that we wanted to fund. And um we didn't get any indication at all that of three, um, there was any kind of pushback that we were engaged in too much activity or requesting too much money.
Okay, but if they say, well, you can only have part of it, they're not going to tell us that. They'll just pick the one that they want to pick. Is that?
Yeah, typically, we, we, we make a request and um uh they decide whether or not they'll honor the full request or some portion of it.
All right, thank you. I think it makes sense.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you uh for bringing this presentation to us tonight. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the work that you've put into uh bringing each of these projects to us. And I wholeheartedly support them all, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Cersei.
Great. Oh, well, I want to echo Councilmember Siemens and appreciation that you all are looking for these alternative funding sources. One question I have is about, um, I believe one of the items um was for a fund. And I, I wonder, it's not a lot of money, right? Um, and if we're establishing a fund, is the idea that we would need to continue to contribute to, as a city, to something like that, if we're establishing a new fund and where funds can be made available? And then what would be the timelines in which we would need to spend these dollars? Or these dollars that have to be expended within a year? So we kind of need to have clean mechanisms for getting those monies out the door.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the question. This wouldn't be the first time that we've um requested money for a fund. Um, and in a way, it's kind of just praising in a sense. Uh, the, the most recent fund request was for the Affordable Housing Program. Um, and you're right, we did have um kind of ideas, concepts, kind of baking in the background, um uses for that money. Um, and I think the same is true particularly for the uh multifamily renovation program. Um, city staff expect to issue the first round of that grant at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, and my guess, Councilmember, is that there'll be no shortage of requests. Um, you know, and, and I think I'm, I'm using as a kind of a, 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 a barometer for my statement, uh, the sustainability grants that have gone out um in the last year, so, and how quickly that money has gone. Um, and so the, the money for that particular program, um, we have combined HCD and Public Works have kind of combined a, a, a um, the issuance of that money into a single grant. And so it'll be kind of going out together, and we expect that um we'll get as, uh, equal amount of response um as, as we have in the past. And so I think that money will, will be used rather, rather quickly. I think in terms of uh the, the tenant opportunity to purchase fund, um, I think it remains to be seen, to be quite honest. I think there's a lot of interest in, in, in tenant organizations purchasing buildings. Um, I think the, the lack of use has probably been mostly a lack of expertise. And I think the ability for the city to provide that technical assistance, uh, the hope from city staff is that we'll see an uptick in the ability for um, you know, first-time home buyers, folks that are currently renters, to pursue the opportunity in earnest and really be successful.
And, and would we work with an external group to provide that technical assistance? Or are we hoping to use some of those funds to like increase our own staffing capacity to do?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate the question. Um, we, we would use external sources primarily. Um, as a, for instance, uh, the tenant association at Leland, uh, Lee Avenue was using Mikasa. Um, and Mikasa provides a lot of that type of support in the District of Columbia as well as Montgomery County. So we'd be really relying on organizations like that. You know, there, there, there's not a lot of funding. A lot of the times, they do that kind of work pro bono. Um, and to be able to offer kind of some assistance financially to encourage them to do more work in the city of Tacoma Park, I think, would be a pretty decent incentive. Um, and to answer your, your uh last question, we have two years to use this money. Um, and so uh I think we've got shovel-ready projects, for the most part, um, at least very much conceptual projects uh um that we think would, would make use for, for uh each of the three categories that we talked about tonight.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is great. I, I noticed that we got almost everything we asked for last time in response to Councilmember Kovar's point about, are we asking for too much? I think maybe not. Um, and I had some of the same questions, so you've already touched on them. On the Lee Avenue Limited Equity Co-op, I think I heard you say that the purchase of the property is partly financed by the Green Bank.
Right.
So that suggests that there's a sustainability piece to it, even though the city is not paying for that part in this case.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's more detail in, in my memo. But essentially, the, the, the renovation is for energy efficient upgrades. Um, a lot of it related to uh heating and cooling, uh, the, the, the building envelope. Um, and then there's more or less general energy efficient upgrades, um, as well as solar panels that the tenant association wants to put on the roof.
Great, thanks. I missed that. Uh, yeah, I, this looks good to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Eubanks. Mr. Eubanks, uh, thank you for the presentation. It's good that your office is soliciting funds uh that will actually take some of the council housing priorities and turn them into a reality. Uh, have you guys thought about in, uh, in your office soliciting uh federal funding? I was on a call with um Republican Congresswoman out of Texas, Texas's twenty-fourth congressional, congressional district. And, you know, they were, you know, there's going to be a new Congress very soon. And housing uh is very important, whether it's blue or red districts. And uh the staffer did say that, you know, most housing decisions are made locally. And so have you guys thought about, you know, whether it's through HUD, whether it's through earmarks that are now available for congressional members to try to look at uh getting more funding for the federal government in these housing priorities? Thank you.
Once again, I, I appreciate the question, and I think it's an important one. The short answer, council members, no, we don't really consider, um, and quite honestly, haven't had recent capacity to expand um kind of our purview of, of available uh grant programs that we might um pursue. Uh, we will be um in, in short order uh seeking a grants coordinator. Um, and that grants coordinator, part of their responsibility is going to be um for, for all of HCD's divisions to um really develop a strategic plan in line with council priorities um for affordable housing and economic development. Um, and, and organize our thought process um and oriented towards um funding sources that might allow us to accomplish some of our goals. So while we aren't doing it now, it is something that we hope to do in the near future.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Siemens, did you have another? No. All right, Mr. Eubanks, I just want to say thank you. Um, this is exciting, having particularly the Lee Avenue project, having the, the resident there uh a number of times, and I'd be remiss if I didn't um also mention Delegate Charcutian, who has been helping the residents there identify some of the grants and other energy efficiency work. And Councilwoman Dibala happy to share with you a lot of information that we have um working with uh the tenants. And I know that they could not be here um this evening, but wanted to extend their thanks, um, particularly Mr. Eubanks to you and um the assistance you've been providing them. Um, so thank you very much, and um I look forward to voting on this when, when we get back on July sixth.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. And note that we moved it earlier, so you didn't have to stay late.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next then, uh, and unfortunately for the folks who do have to stay, uh, we have first, we have two, we have two presentations tonight. The first is going to be a presentation of organizational needs and risk assessment study, and I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, we are very excited uh to be joined this evening uh by Mr. Alan Pennington from Matrix uh who was selected as, as the consultant to help us go through our organizational assessment. Um, as well to just uh go back in, in memory of time when we started this, this process, council approved uh the, uh, appointment with Matrix back in November. We did our official kickoff early December. Um, what we were looking for is for Matrix to evaluate our current structure and workforce composition, determine our appropriate staffing levels for the future, determine our efficiencies, implement uh to be implemented and to improve our service delivery. Uh, and we're excited about the forty-five recommendations that we received and the thorough report from Alan and his team. And I'll turn it over to you, Alan.
Great, thank you. Um, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight to give you a summary of the report. And look forward to answering any questions you might have. So uh you just heard from the city manager a little bit about the overview of the project scope. So I won't spend a lot of time on this, but it was to, a pretty broad scope that allowed us to look at a variety of different things. Ways to minimize risk and liability, your service focus, leadership and organizational structure, the organizational culture, culture, and general efficiency and effectiveness of operations. The project approach that we took, I just want to give you a little background about how we went through this. We did a round of interviews with departmental staff, and, and those were done in person. So we were actually able to see your facilities and locations. Uh, we had an opportunity, I had an opportunity to meet with each of you and talk with you and get your insights and thoughts. Uh, we did an all-employee survey, so every employee had an opportunity to provide direct input to our project team. Um, we did a SWAC analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges analysis as part of the senior leadership team meeting. We then did what we call sort of a service review. So we looked at the functions that each of the individual operating areas and departments were providing, compared them against a variety of things, industry standards, uh, other municipalities. Compared them against a variety of things, industry standards, other municipalities. And looked at whether they were operating generally efficiently and effectively, or were there some opportunities for improvement there? And then we developed a series of recommendations that we are going to present tonight. That were based upon a variety of things, aligning staffing against the existing service levels or service standards or demands. The efficient to increase efficiency or to more effectively manage operations. I want to spend a few minutes sort of setting the groundwork for the things that are going to follow. So first, I think you you should all acknowledge, and I know that you know this, that you have overall a very high performing organization with. Very high expectations placed upon them. Those expectations are usually are are not completely aligned with the resources provided to them. So in response to the. Presentation prior to me, the best question I heard from that side of the room come forward is. Are we staffed for this? Is money, do we have the resources we need to implement that? That needs to be the question you ask yourselves on everything moving forward from policy adoption, strategic plan adoptions. That way, you you don't get out of alignment, because what we have found in in doing this is. Staff is trying to meet the needs the best they can that you're in the demands that are put on them. But there's not enough resources to do that. And what has suffered in some cases are some of the core services or everything, because they're stretched way too thin. Having said that, there's a lot of positive performance going on in the organization, a lot, and that's something to celebrate. But we'll talk a little bit more about some specific areas. So we talk about, there's a expectation of high community engagement, and that's what this community expects, what the elected officials expect. And what staff is trying to provide, high council expectations. Levels of service in most areas, well above what we would see in other communities of your size. So that is a positive, but it's also a major challenge in terms of your ability to maintain and sustain that. So there's a, I mentioned this, high performance and exceptional services without the resources needed. So the greater focus on this public focus service delivery and operations. There's been greater focus on the public-facing operations than the internal services, finance, HR, those things that are behind the scenes. Don't really, aren't really meeting the needs that you need from your organization. So you'll see some more specific recommendations regarding to that. And what we feel is needed for organizational capacity. And there's a definite need to enhance some technology. And we'll talk about some specific areas there. Just to put a little bit more context to this, we did do a sort of a high-level core services, service level summary. And in most departments, you're providing services above, as I said, other communities. But there's a few things where in individual departments, we wanted to highlight some specific things for your your consideration or background. In the city clerk's office, the biggest one is on the election management. In Maryland, that's obviously a common focus in most other communities it is not. What makes you a little bit unique is your separate voter role that has to be maintained as a policy. City manager, nothing we really want to know in that department at this point. City TV, very high focus on community programming. I would stack. Your community TV program up against any community of your size and much larger. And the same thing on the communication side, that level of public engagement. And interaction and the quality of the stuff you're putting out speaks highly of your your staff and your organization. And finance, there's no. Core services issues, we wanted to specifically say nothing that you shouldn't be doing. But there is a a missing focus on a few areas of procurement, compliance and long-range planning. Not saying you're not doing those, we think you need to enhance the level that you're doing to meet the organizational need. Housing and community development. One, while it's a small program, the arts program is something that is unique and for many communities. And so we just wanted to highlight that. And human resources, it's similar to the finance function. Where there needs to be some greater focus on training, risk management, employee relations. And development. And and we'll talk a little bit more about about. The training piece as we go through this. In information technology, it's a strategic planning effort. There's, while it's easy to say we need to update the system or that system, there's a lot of work that goes into that. And and they need the resources to effectively manage that. And we'll have one specific example as we move forward. Library, nothing we're we're suggesting that you eliminate. But you are providing it at a higher level of service, and if you were to acquire that from that service from the county, we know that's a conscious decision you made. But it's also our obligation at least to point out that you've made that decision, and that obviously has impacts on your budget and how you provide services. Similarly, police would be in the same situation. You could provide, you could acquire services from the county for functions like dispatch or even patrol. You've made that decision to have a full-service department, and it has an impact on on your approach. In public works, the only things we want to highlight under this piece, sustainability and composting programs are two that set you apart. And obviously then have costs and staffing and implications, and the in-house refuse collection. And and lastly, recreation, this is the one, when I first started this project with my team, jumped off the boards at us. Because the number of staff and the resources you put into that far exceeds most other communities your size. But you're providing a wide breadth of services, both programming, before and after care, that set you apart. So. I just need to keep that in mind as we talk about the recommendations. I'm going to go department by department and just summarize the key recommendations that are in the report for each of them. I'll try to do it quickly so we can get to your questions and comments. We have recommended in the out years, so we've sort of said. In giving you these recommendations in the report, we have a priority placed on it as well as sort of a estimated timeframe. Those are to guide you in in implementation and in developing a plan to move forward. They're not hard and fast, but. We have recommended in the city clerk's office an additional position in the out years, principally to address the issue of records retention. Digitization, digitizing records and providing records in an open and transparent way. And to ensure that internally and externally you have available what you need. It's it's really a critical component moving forward, but it takes staff time to do. And we think you're better served having a staff member doing it than contracting out. It is easy to contract out the digitizing, but it's not easy to classify that management, manage the program, that sort of thing. And along with that, you would then develop that comprehensive records retention and document management program. In the city manager's area, in the sort of our broad organizational wide recommendations, we have recommended that you look at. Implementing over time a performance management program using data to report on the performance of each of your departments. But you have no capacity to do that right now, either with staff in the manager's office or with staff in the operating department. So it would take some additional resources. We've recommended to help. Keep you in alignment with staffing and resources for your your work efforts. That as part of the annual budget process, you could develop annual work plans for the departments. So as you're adopting the budget, you sort of have. An expectation of here's what they've committed to do with these resources. Doesn't prevent you from having the policy decisions about we want to change things, or we want more added or this drop. But then you can work with the departments to realign that annual work plan and know what you're really going to get accomplished. And I think the departments hopefully will will find this beneficial, because right now they have more on their plates than they can perform. They're trying to hit everything and keep it moving, and they know in some cases they're failing what your expectations are, because you haven't had that difficult discussion. So we can provide examples of some that other communities have used if that would be beneficial. But I think this ensures that you're aligning that annual expectation with your financial resources. And we've recommended to support these two programs and others, one additional position. And we've given you a couple options in the report that can be a dedicated position. Or it could be incorporated in with some other recommendations and look at a restructuring that might have an assistant or a deputy manager. One over internal operations, one over some departments. There's a variety of ways you can implement that, depending upon other decisions that you make. In city TV, we have not recommended any additional staff positions at this point in time, nor have we in the communications arena. But we did know. The the current services that you're providing in in the communications. But the one area that you're, you don't really have resources assigned to is the public information on a citywide basis. And I think that's something you should look at in future years, but it would take an additional position. So we have recommended that these two functions be combined into a comprehensive, single department. That allows you to, they're already working extremely closely together day to day. It's not an issue of we're recommending it because it's not working well. We're saying it is working well, but here's a way to streamline that organization. And then if you add the public information, and if you do the the organizational alternative that has an additional position in the manager's office. They could be grouped under that and sort of restructure how that whole group is is functioning. On finance, and while these are in no particular order, they're sort of in the order in which the report outlined them. Upgrading or replacing the financial system is a hype, should be a high priority. And I know it's budgeted, it's planned. I want to reemphasize that. The efficiency and effectiveness you would like to get from some of the processes are not going to happen unless you change how you're using that technology now. Either enhancing what you have in place or replacing it. And and doing that and some of these other recommendations will allow the the finance director to focus on longer-term strategic issues. Rather than day-to-day operational issues. We're suggesting you should really be having a ten-year financial planning. A document that gives you that broader perspective, so you know the decisions you make, the impact beyond next year. And at least a five-year enhanced capital budget. Providing some regular data analytics to detect financial irregularities, manage your financial risk. Evaluate compliance with financial policies, not because we think there's a problem, but to ensure that you don't have a problem. It's sort of a best practice in in local government. One of the biggest technology issues that it it seems relatively minor, but it it's a major resource suck right now. Is the timekeeping and payroll process between finance and HR, because it's a shared responsibility with time reporting and the payroll processing. There are two systems in play that don't communicate well, and it's creating a lot of problems internally. You probably have at least a half a position, if not three quarters of a position between the two of them, focused on payroll beyond what you typically need. Or what we would typically see in another organization your size, where typically one person, one FTE could handle that payroll for an organization your size. You have at least one and a half to one and three quarters time put into that. As well as a portion of another position in the city manager's office that's doing a leave reconciliation. Because those systems are wrong, and it's the only way to ensure employees' leave times accurate. It's just a tremendous resource strain when you have many other higher priority issues to address. So that's a technology fix, but prioritize it the best you can. And whether that's with the HRIS implementation or the financial system implementation, it should be. You know, one of the biggest issues focused on. I mentioned briefly the service expansion, adding a a programming, a procurement program. That really focuses on procurement citywide, establishing master contracts, ensuring you're getting the best pricing. Done well, you're going to save money from what you're currently spending by getting somebody who's a professional in that to do do that. And also grants management, you know, I heard you talk earlier, you may be doing some other things with grants management. One option would be to move this to the finance department and have a much broader citywide look, because there are grants out there, they take time to find, they take time to write. More importantly, once you win them, they take a lot of time to comply with reporting, funds distribution that you need to stay current on. So we have recommended additional purchasing coordinator position in the finance department. In housing and community development, we also talk about the full-time grants coordinator position. So if you, you could do it and leave the position in housing and community development. You could combine it into one and move it to finance, you could have one and a half to whatever you determine. But we do concur that there should be a full-time grants position within the city. And we have recommended increasing the arts coordinator, even though I said it's something you're doing above and beyond others. We feel the workload and focus you have on that would warrant a full-time position. But we are recommending it be organizationally realigned within the recreation department, rather than housing and community development. In human resources. There's a need to look at developing and implementing greater workforce planning, looking into the future. Who's going to be retiring, what skills are we going to need to be replacing, so that they can be a little bit more proactive in supporting the departments? But prior to doing that one, if you're looking at all the things we have listed for them, first prioritization needs to be on getting. Current vacancies filled and current programs up and running at at the appropriate level. And that includes expanding employee relations. And especially training programs, there's a minimal training that is being provided. And there's a lot that should be, some are for compliance, whether that's sexual harassment prevention, diversity. Inclusion, engagement, or skills enhancement. As well as supervisory training. Those are all things that they need to expand their their efforts on, as well as some additional focus on risk management. But they can't do it with the existing resource, and we have recommended an additional position of a senior HR specialist for this. Then you can enhance the workforce planning. In talking with many departments, and I know you had to make some budget decisions and hold some positions open. But as those have been opened up for filling, there's still been a lot of turnover. So recruitment and retention needs to be a primary focus, getting them filled as quickly as possible and looking at ways. That you can retain them. And I know you're talking later about compensation, and that may be one factor. But other factors are training and other work-life balances within the organization. And I know many employees we talked with and many that record responded to the employee survey noted. One of the benefits of being in this organization, especially as a smaller, is they get opportunities they wouldn't in larger organizations. Unfortunately, that means they grow and sometimes they then move on. And information technology. We have recommended that they develop a multi-year technology plan so that. You can clearly see, here's the investments we need to make, and here's what we can expect them to implement over the next several years. It's also important that they work with department heads on this, so that there's a common understanding of where they fall in the priority. And and that really is all it is. It's not saying there isn't a need, is there's only so much capacity for what they can implement. And we have recommended an additional IT position, because we don't believe they were appropriately staffed in order to. Provide existing or recommended. Services. In the library. We've made no changes in staffing, but we have suggested that you should reconsider that, relook at it as a new library is built. Because many things are going to change, layouts, programming efforts. That that should be adjusted there. The the only real recommendation in here is to implement the material selection policy. We do talk a little about expanding data collection. Don't want you to infer that they're not doing data collection. They are, there's a lot. And they provided it, we shared much of it in the report, there was additional information they shared. So again, no real changes in the library section. In police, which is a pretty long section with all the data analytics regarding staffing. But to summarize it, you are appropriately staffed and patrolled. To maintain a fifty-five percent proactive level, which is very good. Gives you plenty, you're not, your officers are not running from call to call. We think the current staffing levels for detectives and dispatch are both appropriate. The major recommendation here is we recommended moving to operational units, parking and code enforcement to housing and community development. I believe you move forward with the code enforcement one as part of the budget. So, you know, we concur with that, we think that's a great idea. It really provides you the opportunity to focus more on, well, there's a perception issue, it's much more on compliance and getting. Properties resolved rather than if if somebody said them with the police department, they feel much more like it's much more aggressive, even if the person isn't aggressive. So we think that's going to be a much better. Or house for that organizationally. Public works. There's a lot of recommendations here, but they're not, many of them are very minor. So filling some vacant positions is a real critical issue there. They, being understaffed in some areas has had a huge impact on their ability to perform. But particularly, we think they need to work with HR to look at. The inability to attract and retain some positions. There's, you know. Part of this, if it's salary, you may be addressing it and other things, but if there are other things in these areas that we're we're not able to stay at that full staffing level. That's that deserves some focused attention, because it has had some operational impacts. To get through this, there's the ability, though, to use some outsourcing of on-call and preventive maintenance services until you get to that point. Fleet maintenance and right-of-way division are appropriately staffed. Vegetation management, we we feel is appropriately staffed for your service levels. We have recommended in here that you develop and adopt some additional maintenance standards for different types of acreage. And report on those maintenance efforts on an ongoing basis. We have added a recommendation for an additional engineering position, one area that you are understaffed in in terms of technical capabilities. We recommended a part-time technician in the urban forestry arena to help with the development of a comprehensive public. Uh, we recommended a part-time technician in the urban forestry arena to help with the development of a comprehensive public education plan, permit reviews and tree inventory development. Uh, a part-time specialist in sustainability, uh, for research grants and public outreach. Um, in solid ways, no staffing changes, but we noted, um, the ability to more, more fully utilize existing staff by some scheduling changes. Um, on the technology side, the greatest need here is for a CMMs, a computerized maintenance management system, asset management system. Uh, that would allow you to more effectively manage, um, your, both your, your investments for infrastructure and tie into your CIP planning. But also the ongoing maintenance requirements for all the assets that you have. We've recommended in here a consolidation of right-of-way maintenance and vegetation divisions and the elimination of one supervisory position when those are combined. Um, and transition, consider transition in the future to a more outs- outsourced model. Uh, facilities maintenance focusing on lower skill in-house, um, and getting some of the more higher skilled, uh, functions that aren't needed on as much a day-to-day basis through outsourced services. Recreation, core staffing levels are appropriate, um, some additional data analysis, uh, that may have some staffing implications in the future. Uh, but we have recommended one change here of maintenance of athletic fields, uh, movement to public works to put all maintenance activities uh, together in one unit and allow people to sort of focus on their core areas. In terms of the ups and downs, and there are more ups than downs that were in there. I did a quick table just to show you the net impact and, and roughly it's about a seven point five head FTE headcount with the additions and, and eliminations, um, across the different departments. Um, but we're not recommending they all be done in one year. If you can do that, that's great. I mean, it would be like a boost to performance, but we understand there are difficult times. And this is where you need to be, um, prioritizing, you know, which ones are most important in terms of, um, the work plans that are adopted. Um, in terms of how you move forward from this, after you review the report and, and accept it and, and you discuss it with staff, typically what we would see is, um, you know, your review and understand it, get clarifications you need. Typically staff would develop an implementation plan and present that to you where you would have further discussions, modifications and agreement. Um, and then that can be done then, um, as part of every budget review moving forward where you can get periodic progress reports on how you're moving forward, make adjustments to timing as things may change. You know, technology, uh, investments move faster than you thought, then you can move those up. If something's taking longer, you have a financial changing condition, you can spread it out over more years. But it keeps staff and you aligned with how fast can we progress and are we on track with what our expectations are? Um, and then the last bullet point goes back to one I made very earlier. Through every interaction, whether it's in your council agenda items, if there's new programs presented. The more you can have identified in there, here's the impact on operating budget, here's the impact on staff requirements, here's an impact on capital. Every time you do that, um, you're, you're always then making your decisions with, with the best available information and a very comprehensive look on what impact that has. It may not change your decision in any way, but it allows you to make a more enlightened decision. And, and basically then that data can feed into that ten-year financial plan. So you can see, oh, we adopted it this year. Here's what it does five years out, eight years out, ten years out. Um, and I think that's really beneficial to do that. So with that, um, I summarized a fairly lengthy report in maybe twenty, twenty-five minutes and we'll turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, uh, so much for that presentation. Uh, I will see if my colleagues, if we could minimize again the screen so I can see council member Kovar and Siemens. I will start with council member.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. You know, all these recommendations cost money. The FTEs, I guess the seven is the net. What I didn't see in the report is any recommendations where the council would have to consider not providing these services internally. Like whether it's public works, whether it's policing. And what would be that trade-off if we had an MOU with the county to provide those services? What would be the cost savings? What would be a difference in service level? Because right now it just looks like a Christmas tree with, you know, all types of possibilities that council could, you know, provide residents, but all these possibilities cost money. And it's not, and it's going to have a fiscal impact, not just this year, but a number of years down the road. But what can we do? Cause inflation's not going anywhere. We're having difficulty trying to maintain our current, you know, uh, financial position. It's, it looks good right now, but who knows what happens tomorrow or, you know, five years from now. You know, uh, and you did say that municipality of our size, usually we do, you know, municipalities do not do these types of services, you know, they're, or they're not at the level that we do it. Uh, what are the alternatives or are there any alternatives that you guys consider?
Uh, great question. So, uh, the, the approach we took and, and sort of in, uh, going through the, uh, you know, the core, um, scope of services requested, we, we did try first and principally what we presented is aligning your organization, what are the resources and staffing you need to provide the services for the decisions and policies you've currently adopted in terms of these are what we're doing. However, throughout the report, we have made some notes, um, in different areas where we've highlighted what is unique or maybe at a higher level. Uh, and one of the things we talked with staff about wasn't able to get it done for tonight, but we are going to send them an addendum that you can have is saying for those core services where we identify perhaps the services above. Let me just pick one and hopefully I don't hit, um, somebody's, um, golden cow here, but the, uh, the arts program, for example, I mentioned that in my discussion, that's above and beyond what most communities do. So you, we could say you could eliminate that program, save the half FTE. And you would have X dollars that you could save from that. Um, the, the biggest money, just speaking directly and honestly i- is in the services of library and full-service policing. Um, so those are the, the two biggest ones where you've already made some pretty substantial decisions about how you're pro- going to provide that service. And they're not the easiest ones to determine, um, the actual savings of if you were to eliminate them in contract with the county, for example, because you've already bonded for money for the library and that's a pretty complex thing to undo. Uh, and on police, um, you do have the cost sharing, the, the rebate from the county and, and, and all that back and forth. But it's been done as a, it was sort of a negotiated process this last time, so it's not as clean as if it was a direct formula. But those, I mean, if you wanted to, you say, hey, if we were to back away from something, those are where you're going to get the majority of any impact. Uh, but we didn't necessarily recommend them because it is fairly typical for most communities outside of Maryland to provide those services. Uh, within Maryland, you've made this decision that we're going to provide them because that's what we value. Either we want control over the policing or we want the enhanced library services. So we didn't necessarily recommend you make a change there, but we did highlight, hey, those are different, they are options. Otherwise, outside of those, it's really tinkering around the edges. So you can always reduce service levels. We tried to find a way to be financially sustainable and we're pretty conservative on staff recommendations. I mean, seven point five sounds like a lot. Um, probably if we tallied up what departments wanted, it would have been a lot more, but we're, we're pretty conservative in looking at that. Um, and we feel that's what you need to continue to provide services at the high level you expect for the services you've committed to. Or in a couple cases, um, HR, finance and IT in particular. Where we think your organization, if you don't make those investments, you're not setting up the other departments to be successful. Or you don't have the appropriate risk management and internal controls that you need. So, um, that's sort of how we tried to balance managing those, but we are going to provide a little bit of an addendum that sort of goes through that report, highlights those key areas that you can have that.
And if, if I can follow up.
Yeah.
You said that jurisdictions outside of the state of Maryland. Those other municipalities, uh, what are their revenue sources? Are there more than just property taxes in a small percentage of income tax? Do they also get sales tax?
It can, yeah, there, there's a wide, every state is so unique on revenue, local government revenue sources and revenue approaches. Then, and that's what makes it difficult to make those comparisons across state boundaries. Um. So yeah, some places have the sale, direct sales tax, some have gas tax, some have no income tax. Um. You know, there's a whole variety of, of ways that, that those are done. Um. So definitely understand the, the difficulty you're facing, um, you know, and that's why um, again, we go back to this long-range financial planning so that you see every time you make that decision. It's usually easy to balance on a one-year basis. It's those out years that are the real killers. Um, and that's where we're going to ask, you know, those are you making the policies? That's where you need to keep your eye. I mean, you know, that's, um, that's, that's the harder part is no, that compounding. So.
And then, uh, when you look at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges analysis that you did. Uh, it says here that, um, a strength is training availability, but then it also says, you know, if you go down, uh, I guess the lack of available training.
Yeah. Well, and part of this, remember we had every department in the room sharing and for some departments it was a strength. You know, they thought there was good availability of training for them principally from external sources. Um, the issue was sometimes they couldn't take advantage of it because they couldn't afford to have people leaving. Uh, so there are some cases where it's both a strength and a weakness for your, for your organization. But internally, you're not providing what I would say is the right level of training to protect the organization or to develop your staff. Um, you know, the, you know, it's not easy being a manager or supervisor. If you don't train people for that. You know, most people will succeed, but some might need a little help. It's different moving from a peer into a managerial role if you promote from within, we need to set them up for success and help them do that. Uh, plus, you know, all the other employee issues that, that can result from poor, poor management or supervision.
And then the other thing that I saw was, um, uh, about how staff feels that council gets, I guess, maybe too involved in some of the things that they're doing.
Yeah, it's, it's not uncommon to see that. I mean, I think I started off by saying you, you set some pretty high expectations for this organization and then and that your role as elected officials is determine what the community wants and how your government's going to provide service. What we're, and we're nowhere in here to, we say you shouldn't do that. We're just saying, let's temper that by the resources we have available. And at, at least consider the resources available as you make those decisions so that we know, because staff, I mean, most of them want to perform whatever you ask of them. But they don't have the ability to say, no, if you adopt a policy, you adopt a strategic plan. Um, and you're hitting above your weight in many areas. There are a lot of issues and services you provide because they're important to your constituents. Other communities don't even worry about it. It's not even on their radar. Um, and so you know, from a staff perspective, that's great. You're, you, in many cases you're leading the, you're on the leading edge. But if we're also then ignoring our basic services to put time into that, uh, you're, you're doing another disservice there. So.
Thank you, and I look forward to the supplemental report.
Great, uh, Councilman Searcy.
Uh, well, thank you so much. Um, that was an excellent presentation and, um, definitely, um, look forward to diving deeper into the report. Um, there were a, a couple of things that came to mind for me, the, the concept of the work plan and having that, um, kind of accompany the budget. And I know that, um, for me personally, reviewing the budget is often looking at I don't know what I'm looking at. I see the people, I see the cost, but I don't necessarily know what's being done. Um, and I don't fully understand the implications of decisions that I may make regarding the budget on what it may mean for like core services versus nice to do, but not mandatory kind of things. Um, so have you seen in other jurisdictions where there is more or less like a real-time updating of a work plan? Um, so maybe it is an annual process, but maybe it's, it's a little bit more frequent than that. You know, as we are starting to make decisions or budget amendments, so it's, it's a more iterative, ongoing process than a once a year kind of thing.
So what, what I've typically seen is an annual process as part of the budget setting. But then if you were to make budget adjustments during the year, it would be appropriate then to update that and say, here's the implication it would have on that work. Well, and I said, I, I can get you some examples of some that others are using. There, there aren't a lot of people doing it, but it's, it's, I think it's really, it's, it's sort of hit me when I kind of saw the challenges your organization was facing. I said, I think this is really a, a good approach for you. Um, but here where I think it's going to be important is aligning, um, whether it's core services, uh, supplemental services and I mean, and some cases, service levels, can you, you can say, look, we're, we're still going to have X program. But rather than doing it once a week, we're going to do it once a month. Um, and that's how we can free up resources to do something else. So I'll give you an example, not from here. We had a client, we were working with them, they were, they were stripping every suite, every street in their community every other week. Well, that's a level that most communities can't afford and don't need. It's also a level beyond what you need to appropriately maintain the streets. So you know, you could, they could adjust that to once a month and free up, you know, half their resources that they were putting in that to put into some other higher priority public works operation. So it's not just core and non-core. You also need to think about at what level do we want to provide this service? And say, if you can't provide it at that level, tell us what level you can provide it with the resources we're given. That, that's the other way to do that. It's okay. It's better than to adjust that service level and, and meet it than to keep the expectation up here and fail to hit it every year. Because the community say, hey, you know, you're supposed to be doing X and say, yeah, but we can't afford, you know, we have the resources to do that. Everyone's going to be upset. Staff's going to feel like they were put in a no-win. The community feels like the obligation made to them in the budget process, it wasn't hit. Uh, when the more appropriate thing is, no, we're going to change it because, you know, we need resources somewhere else. And I think most people know there's, there's a finite resources. Everyone's facing a lot of stresses right now. And, and special groups who are proponents of one particular issue want to see that move forward no matter what, but when you look at comprehensively, you know, people can understand, okay, I see how it fits into that bigger context.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. And did you look at, um, in terms of some of the kind of process or IT efficiencies that we could make in terms of like things like payroll and finance? And the impact that that could potentially have on staff capacity?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, we did, but right now the, the systems aren't, aren't really suitable to, I mean, it wasn't a situation where we could say automate this process. You have two systems that they've tried to automate. There needs to be a wholesale change, either significant revision or replacement to get where you need. There isn't a true, uh, HRIS, human resources information system that would allow you to automate some of those processes. With the right financial system, you can automate procurement, you can, you can do bill pays, um, electronically. There's a whole host of things you can do if those systems are put in place correctly. And that's why the IT support on the front end is so critical to make sure the systems will do what the operational department heads wanted to accomplish.
So would you, you know, as we're thinking through the staging, and I know in the full report you kind of provided, um, timelines or anticipated kind of buy dates for some of these things. Um, and it seemed like a lot of the, the tech and the infrastructure kind of things were sooner, a little sooner, which, which we're working on.
Yeah.
Um, and I think the, you know, in my mind, fixing those things could potentially help us to identify where we might actually need those extra FTE or free up enough staff time to where maybe some of these FTE increases could be something that we're considering further out.
I mean, I'm, I'll go back to the payroll example. I think that's one where just because of the process that's being placed, at least a half time FTE, maybe spread over to the two departments, but a half FTE's time is going to be freed up from really not valuable things that they're doing. It's critical that employees are paid on time and paid correctly, but um, it shouldn't take this much resources. So, um, that's where you will get that. And that is why we prioritize technology earlier than some other things.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Kostic.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Sure.
Um, I have one sort of more specific question and then a, a kind of larger picture question. Um, on the specific one, you mentioned the idea of a public information officer, which I think makes a lot of sense. Um, we do currently have some of that within the police department. We have, uh, kind of a part-time, it's my understanding, it's like part of, part of her role. Um. Did you look at whether a PIO for the whole city would include the police department or whether that would be Did you look at whether a P I O for the whole city would include the police department or whether that would be. Step, we would want to maintain those separately or or how that would best work.
So so we did recommend it being a separate position. Um, it, you know, a transitional phase could be to combine them both. Um, but it's not uncommon for police to have a dedicated, even if it's not full time, but a dedicated resource to that because it is. It's a little bit more technical, there's a lot more um confidentiality, there's just a different set of of skills sometimes in that arena. And it's not uncommon for us to see uh, departments who are allocating somebody in that role from the police department. Um, separate and apart from uh, a citywide P I O function.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there typically in a situation like that, some collaboration with the two P I Os? Because I could see some benefit.
Absolutely, collaboration uh, between them pretty significantly. When we've worked with organizations where they back each other up, it's just that. You know, typically, you know, they haven't been combined, but yeah, absolutely, very strong collaboration. Because you want a consistent message and how people are representing uh, the city in terms of what they're talking about, how they talk about it. Uh, that they are contacting the right people at the right time and, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, I I I've had some of the similar thoughts to my colleagues here who who asked you questions before. I think it's really useful to kind of have the the dig in here and and this detailed information. Um, it does make me a little wary looking at all of those staff positions that are recommended to be added um, at a time when we've. Already had some some difficult budget discussions. Um, and so. Uh, my brain just kind of goes to, you know, what what's the alternative if if we don't add those staff positions? Is it really, we reduce our level of service uh, or find, um, I know we've talked about the idea of, you know. Could there be some some opportunity with with the county to to share services? Is was that at all a part of um. Your your calculus or is there a way to sort of say, here's the the financial cost of adding those positions and here's. Maybe the the trade off cost of not adding those positions.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's going to be, I mean, the the biggest trade off cost is going to be, you're continuing to to either not. Put resources where we think you need to to strengthen the organization, or you're not gonna be able to provide the services at the current levels. That you are expecting them. So the easiest thing is to reduce some service levels in different areas. Um. You know, there are options like, I mean, we selectively talked about potential outsourcing in a couple areas, but principally. As a way to supplement until you fill staff positions. I mean, you could look at contracting out broader service areas. I mean, there are communities that contract out. Uh, all waste collection, you know, there are multiple national private companies that do that, and they usually do it for cost efficiency. Um, sometimes at a trade off for specialized services or or other things. So there are all those things. We we were trying to balance as as best we could. Uh, finding a sustainable approach for you to maintain your existing services where possible, but realizing that may not be possible. When you look at the timing, uh, you may say, hey, that's really, we, there are things we want to do, but that's too aggressive and we need to phase it in over five years rather than. We principally looked at about a three year timeframe.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that either, as long as you're taking a long term view to say, here's how we want to get there. Maybe we're not gonna get there as fast as we want to. Um, sort of the same thing we're talking about in these annual work plans and some other things is. What's realistic? I mean, maybe we do want a public information officer, but it can't be in year two, it's gonna be in year three or four. Um, but that's where we eventually want to go.
Yeah, I I really like the idea of the long term financial planning and tying that in with the specific work plans and the specific. Um, deliverables really in terms of what we can and can't do, because I do think that's something we struggle with when we look at the budget every year as. Here's this number and and residents think, well, we'll we'll be able to continue the same level of service. Uh, and it's it's very unclear, I think, to be able to to say like, this is the thing that's gonna suffer if we cut this line item.
And 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 I I would emphasize, and I think we put a high priority on it, is, you know, establishing. The data you need to develop the performance measures, the performance metrics and the reporting. Takes some time, you know, you're not gonna develop that overnight. You know, the asset management program for public works. Will provide you great information on how to build out a a capital investment plan to maintain your existing infrastructure. Um, pretty, pretty um definitively, because there are routine maintenance cycles, you can put them in. You know, here's what we have to invest just to meet our existing obligations before we build a new building or acquire something else. So those are gonna take multiple years to build up that data and then several other areas where we talk about starting to develop the data. Until you have that, you're not gonna really be able to fully evaluate some of the service levels or performance targets and and make those adjustments, but. You know, you need to start somewhere if you're gonna get to that point to be that sort of data driven organization that I think you want to be. I mean, from what I heard from many of you and what I heard from staff is, he would really like to be able to support this with some more data and give them. A better story about what we're doing or how we're doing.
Absolutely. Yeah, I I think this is a really great document, and I think as we work towards implementing some of this um, in terms of. Figuring out our long term financial plan and those work plans and other things. To me, it seems like an opportunity to have some larger community discussions and really bring in community members in in terms of what people value in the city and. Um, what to to help also, I think, educate people on on what it. It means to have this level of service in terms of what we need on the staffing side and and frankly, tax tax payment side. So, thank you very much.
Uh, next, we have Councilwoman Bala.
Yes, thank you for this, and thank you to the city manager for encouraging us to do this. This is very helpful and I really, a lot of really good information, lots of good analysis, you know, a lot of good ideas. Um, I'm also struggling with the budget implications of this and the question about what. What service levels could be reduced that would not have huge impact? Um, waste collection, once a month, whatever, just, you know, I. So one of my questions is maybe not tonight, but are you able to share a a list of suggested places to look? For reduced service levels?
Yeah, and that's a quality, I I said, we we are gonna provide a supplement that will sort of better call out that summary of.
Yeah, I think I missed that.
Yeah, the the core versus where you're above.
That.
Um, and some areas where maybe the the data isn't there to give you a definitive cost, but to say, this is a decision you could, you could look at. If you want.
Yeah, okay.
Some of them are easier than others because you can just stop doing the program because, you know, but others are, you know. You know, I mentioned recreation, you know, this is one of the first ones that popped up, most communities your size, the number of staff and the dollars allocated that. And many communities your size might be half of what you're putting into it, but it's not easy to say, oh. We can just reduce it by half and save that money when you've built this up to meet certain expectations that you developed and sort of commitments you want to make to the community. Um, but those are the type of things you could, you could look at.
And I don't hear you saying, just since you brought it up, I don't hear you saying that the recreation. Program we have now is somehow inefficient or not going well.
No, so like I said, we tried to build this up to say. If there were efficiencies or issues within the departments, we tried to identify those and give you a recommendation. If not, we tried to say. Are they staffed appropriately? Could it be structured differently? Will technology provide some efficiencies and are there staffing changes to needed to to support that? Um, no, you, I mean, in most cases, nobody is saying any of the things are inefficient and or are um. Not warranted, they're not performing well. Um, it's just, in some cases, there's more on their plate than they can perform. In other cases, you made a decision that you want to be different from others for a variety of reasons. Uh, we're not saying that's wrong, but it has that cost implication. So yes, if you say, hey, we need to reduce. Uh, yes, we'll give you a list to say, here's where you're above below, and and you can use that as a a starting point for those discussions.
Great. Um, so speaking of technology, my second area of question is, I think that in the fiscal twenty three budget, we did. Fund some of the things that are recommended. Okay, so I'm not confused. That is actually true. So some of these, the good news is some of these are in the works, and that's really useful.
What while aware of that, we just wanted to emphasize that they are really important. Yeah, I mean. It's one of those foundational things. I mean, people say, well, we could automate this, we could automate that, yes, but only if you have the tools to do that, and right now you don't.
Right.
Um, and it's not only not allowing you to do that, it's creating more work in some areas for your staff.
Yeah, um, and the third question I had is, did you. On the employee survey, you saw fifty four percent response, I it. What's your sense of that as a level of response?
That's a decent response. Um, is it great? I wouldn't say it's great. Is it poor? No, it's not poor. It's sort of in the middle for what we typically see.
Yeah, okay.
We, quite honestly, we typically see much higher levels typically when there's a major problem. And much lower response when there's less concern about it. So I would say this is probably a decent response for your organization.
Um, and there are some places where clearly the concerns are focused, yeah. Okay, that's that's it for me.
You're welcome.
I, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Siemens, I don't want to ignore you since you all are on, nope, no questions. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, yes, and uh, I appreciate the report and 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 the explanation is very helpful and. There's a lot in here, so I'm still going to be going through it. But I did have a few questions or comments now, and one, and this relates to what a number of my colleagues have also. Uh, re- referred to um, in this question of we have uh, the proposal here that if. Everything was done over a period of years, we'd be talking about a net increase of seven point five F T Es, and so. What isn't a hundred percent clear to me, and maybe the supplemental material that you're uh, mentioning that you'll be providing will help to. Clarify this, but in some cases, is it that services could be. Potentially reduced, and we would still have the same overall amount of staff, or in other cases, would it be? Uh, can some staff be reduced or eliminated without losing out on services? Or in in any case, if if we said, okay, we're gonna add seven point five new folks along the lines that you suggested. That means we gotta find seven point five elsewhere to get rid of. Would that inevitably mean a loss of. Services? I understand the service question is a separate one, because you can decide, okay, are we going to clean the streets? You know, every every week or only X number of months, so there are ways to look at that, but how closely linked? I guess what I'm asking is, how closely linked are the services and the staff?
Um, okay, great question. Um, really closely linked. So uh, let me say it this way, I think the seven point five we've recommended roughly. Is to align your staffing with what we think is needed across the organization to provide. The current expectations on services and service levels. Or to address what we feel are industry best practices or things that you should have in place in your organization. Um, that you would typically see in a high performing organization. And those are, that second group is principally on the administrative services side, so. To say it another way, if you want to reduce staff or you don't want to implement those seven point five. The answer is yes, you would need to find something to adjust, either stretching out the implementation of some of your more um. Overarching policies or procedures, um, or reduce some service levels. Um, I, there is. There's no capacity in the organization for staff to take on that much additional work um, at at present.
So one of the things you talked about was the internal versus the public facing. Kinds of work that staff, when I remember when I was working in federal government, and this is not what I'm saying about the city here because. All the staff I've encountered are doing great work. I think in some of these big federal agencies, sometimes the people who weren't doing good work were stashed in the non. Public facing positions, which wasn't that great if as a fellow staff member of that agency, you had to work with them. Here, it sounds like what you're saying, that was that in the non-public facing, uh, the staff are doing good work, but there's not enough of them. And so I guess one of the questions I have is then for the areas that you've recommended, for there to be staff increases. In the internal workings, um. Is that just to make the whole enterprise function better, or does that translate over ultimately into services too? Because people are spending too much time on other things that have to be done like payroll and so on.
So I think what we're saying is you, those resources on those internal support functions are needed in order for you to provide. Um, the quality or types of services you should have to support your organization. And in some cases, because you don't have that, sometimes it's pushing work out to the operating departments and they're not trained and equipped to do that. Um, and in some cases, it just means you're probably not doing as good a job at it, like training staff, developing track staff. I mean, staff are expensive, we understand that. They're also your biggest investment, and you and and if you're not training and developing them. And focusing on, you know, the organizational culture and environment, uh, you're gonna have other problems, they're gonna cost you way more than. You know, investing in those programs. Um, like procurement is a great example. Um. It's not that you're not doing procurement, you're not thinking about bidding and those things, but a more professional approach could save you some money. More efficiently, but it also gets some of that work off some operating department so they can focus on their core mission. Um, and and that's what we want each department head focusing on really is their core mission. You, we don't train every department head to be the finance expert, uh, the H R expert. You know, we're we're using them for their specialized skills and we need to give them that, that other support that they need so that they can be successful. Um, and it's not uncommon, I should say this, the the situation you're in with having that need on the administrative support side is not uncommon in in most. Public sector entities right now. Um, when times are tough, we're putting money that where the public sees it, public works. Recreation, police, that's where those are the areas that get attention first and. We don't focus on behind the sen- behind the scenes things. It's not flashy, it, nobody gets really enthused about it. I'm just saying. Your organization i- isn't at the the level of health and performance you need it to be at if you if you don't put some additional resources there.
Right, that 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 does make sense. And just on the on the point about the things we do versus what the county does, and this follows up on. What I think several of my colleagues talked about. I I do think, you know, we ought to periodically look at that and maybe we're due for another. Uh, more detailed examination of that, maybe in a way, as I think, uh, at least one of my colleagues mentioned. Pulling in residents to be part of the discussion, the challenge is on something like um, police or the library. Um, it's not just a financial question or or uh, X number of books or X number of. Uh, calls for service will respond, or this many books were given out to people, because it it's a, if you didn't have. What we now have today in the form of a library, library or police, the whole. Situation would be different in the sense that people, some people couldn't go to the library anymore because. It's too far for them to walk and they don't have other forms of transportation. So that's not something that just lends itself to numerical calculations. And by the same uh, the same sort of angle, um, if the police just don't come anymore for certain relatively minor. Uh, calls that they receive, which could be the case, if we turned it back over to the county and maybe the county would want to raise more money to do it too, and we don't. Face some trade off in terms of the taxes. That's a harder thing to measure, so that's why I think ultimately if we're going to look into. This county question, we really need to involve residents just in talking about qualitatively as well as quantitatively. So I'll I'll just mention that. And then there's two other questions. Um, when you talk about the performance standards, I mean, does that include, because a lot of residents have mentioned this over the years, does that include. Having staff uh, account for. Their time more specifically, or each day or week or whatever it is, is that a component of that?
Uh, I was more focusing and and we were sort of presenting it more on the outcomes, you know, whether we're talking about the services delivered, whether that's. Uh, so police, it can be re- response time and for parks and records, the number of um, residents served or program participants. It could be on some of the um. Other services, it could be the number of residents served for a program or participants in a revolving loan fund that you talked about, or houses renovated. I mean, it's the out, we're focusing more on the outcomes. Public works, it would be, you know. Uh, you know, what level of pavement management index you've been able to maintain and, you know, r- roads resurfaced, but you know. Uh, tons of of refuse collected. It's more outcome measures that allow the residents to see what they're getting for their services. And wherever possible, and we talk a little bit about this, you you want things that can be measured in time periods. That that has some meaning, you know, just just raw numbers are not usually great unless there's some some performance or outcome measure to it. So you really want, it's better to have. Five measures per department that are meaningful than twenty that are not meaningful. Because what we're what we're cognizant of is you don't have the capacity for staff to collect a lot of additional data. Or they're gonna be asking for not the one position we've recommended, but five. So, you know, keep that in mind, you know. How can, what what's most critical, most useful for us to make decisions, whether that's for you as policymakers? Or to communicate to the public what you're. Or to communicate to the public what you're trying to achieve.
Okay, and then just one last thing and maybe you can just comment on this briefly. I didn't see this in the report, but I confess I haven't read it as thoroughly, but as I could yet, but someone mentioned it. So this question of the staff expressing some uneasiness over. Counsel involved in it and in some level in in some of the work that they do. And I wasn't sure, as I said, I didn't, I didn't see that in the report myself, but could you just say a few words about? What it is that we're talking about there? And if you see that as a. A major concern that want to be addressed or something that exists naturally in the push and pull that happens with elected versus.
I mean, I think it's fairly common to see that rub and push and pull. I think the real specific issue is. It's sort of a maybe a little bit of a way of a backhanded compliment. I think you're a very active council and you have pushed a lot of different programs. You're very progressive. So staff is not just looking at their basic service delivery in each of the departments. They're also looking at these broader, long range strategies that you're trying to implement to transform your community. And that adds a level of. Thinking and work effort that, you know, distinguishes you and and. This was not comments that were directed us to say, oh. You know, they're, they're calling me up and telling me to do X, Y, and Z. It was more an effort of, hey, there's a lot that's being asked of us from this group and. Frankly, sometimes not believing there's enough understanding of what that impact is on them or how it impacts the organization. Which is why we made some recommendations, you know, to make sure you get the information to understand that. It was really just, hey, they're moving a little faster than we can move and we need to, if we're, if we're going to succeed, we need to get that regulated. And get it in alignment or as an organization, we're going to fail. And one thing even from people who might have shared. A gripe or a complaint or a concern with us, there's a lot of pride in the organization and in the community and their contribution to it. And so everyone does want to succeed and they, so they just want to make sure that, quite frankly, they can live up to the high expectations you're setting. And right now, many of them know they can't. And so that, I'm here sort of here to say, hey, how do we just align these two so that you can get what you need and they can provide what they want to? And yeah, it's easy for me to say you need seven point five and the department's going to say, yeah, we concur. Some do, some don't. But it's harder for you to say, hey, that, that's a big investment we need to make. So the tougher discussion is still yet to come is. How do we phase it? How do we implement it? Or how do we prioritize those? But that's what you're good at is, you know, prioritizing that community need and and demand.
Very, we are. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just have a couple, I think you covered a a great deal. If I'm taking away, I want to make sure I take away from what you said correctly, looking at sort of the top. Like two or three things that you're saying, these are the things you should really be moving on. Like there's a lot that you may phase in, but I'm hearing the technology. Particularly in finance and payroll.
Yes.
And we already have that budgeted, so that's good, but let's make sure we keep it in the budget and keep moving forward. Looking at the department work plans and the ten year financial planning.
All really critical things because I I view all of those as sort of the foundational piece to help you continue to move forward. Again, it's, it's a multi-year effort and if you adopt a plan to implement it and you can move forward, you know, you're, you will start to see results. Faster in some departments because they may have data available or the impact will be greater. But yeah, definitely technology. I mean, I wouldn't skimp on that. And it needs to be a priority and and for them to help the other departments move forward.
Great. And one place I'd be curious, you know, we started a number of years ago to do. Counsel priorities. We didn't do it a lot this year because of, we had the ARPA dollars and there was a lot on the plate of staff and it just seemed like we. And it's something that prior councils do, especially the first year the council is together. And I didn't know if that came up in your analysis at all in terms of being helpful. In focusing not, or you know, is that. A way of then maybe aligning with the work plans as we talked about before.
Yeah, I mean, a good strategic plan or council set of priorities is always useful. Those are sort of the foundational things that everything else should be referenced against, I think. On again, on the presentation prior to me, I think I saw very visibly. It highlighted the council priority that this referenced and and I think that's what you want to do, always link those wherever possible. I think the real value of that discussion is probably among the council so that you come to a meeting of the mind of. We may not all agree on every point, but here's our, our collective priorities for how we're going to move forward. Because everything that comes after that is. I mean, we need to to align it to those, to route it through those and refer and say, we're trying to address your higher priority here, you know. And and you have to have priorities mean, I mean, just stepping back, it does mean you have to set real priorities. Everything can't be a high priority. You've got to say, yeah, this is important, but if something has to give, I want to see the effort going to this higher one first. And then staff at least has additional direction to know how to push and move things forward for you. Still may not be as fast as you like, but at least they're, they're trying to focus on your, your biggest priorities.
Great. I think I'll turn it back to the first, thank you so much. And thank you to the city manager for moving this forward and I'll turn it back to the city manager to. Close this out and next steps.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Alan and your team in Matrix. We really appreciate it. The time that we we spent with you guys and you guys learn our organization. I I think. Alan kind of stole my thunder a little bit on page slide fifteen of his slide deck of implementations. Sorry. So you you saved me, but what we're going to do in the next steps is really, staff's going to take some time and to dive into this. Is a hundred page document a little bit more and then try to develop what we believe is a good document to bring forward to council. And that's probably going to be over the next several months and in the fall, have a conversation with you all to decide, you know, what are the next steps? It's Alan and and several of you have already iterated that there's some things that we're already doing. And some things that you've already appropriated in the budget and we'll be able to prioritize that, highlight those items and then share with you. What we think is feasible as far as timing. I I will say, and. We've had limited discussions on senior leadership team as far as the the FTE count. We're going to dig into that a little bit more as a team and really focus and highlight what are the areas as far as FTEs, we think it makes sense. But we also want to make sure that we align that with the ten year financial forecast. That we're going to be getting out the door very soon and hopefully have that person in place by the fall. That's going to also help us. As we look at not only the this org assessment, but also Bolton is next and and what Scott's going to present on the compensation study as well. So all that is going to intertwine and it's going to make for a busy fall for you all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, well, that tees up next. Then we have our presentation of our compensation study. I'll turn it back over to the city manager to tee this up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this evening, similarly, you all appropriated dollars and and council approved. Us moving forward with Bolton to do our compensation pay equity study in November. We kicked it off at the top of this year, right around January, February, and we're, we're excited. That Bolton was selected and the key thing that we wanted to look at is evaluate compensation levels of positions and determine whether. They're competitive with our neighboring jurisdictions in the region. And with that, I'll turn it over to Scott Schreiber.
Good, thank you. Let's see. That's right. Yeah, there we go. Well, good evening and thanks for having me tonight. It sounds like we're having a little thunderstorm going on right now, so it's a good thing to be inside. So. Given the late hour, I thought I'd go through my report, usually the actual report. Discussing the highlights of the report and obviously respond to any questions that anyone may have. So this is the, the process we went through. It was, you know, gathering information. Talked, talking to Cedar Leader, city leadership as well as council. I believe I spoke to everyone on council. Had a little conversation to gather such input as to attraction retention, you know. Small cities versus large counties, what it takes to try to compete for that talent. That everyone is going after that same labor pool. And so we did that during January and February this year. We looked at your current structure and it's kind of interesting. I tried to get it all on page, your current structure, but this is your current structure. And that we're utilizing now within the city. There's twenty nine grades, thirty two steps, which gives you nine hundred and twenty eight pay sales. There's, it was built with five percent. Spread between each pay grade, so each pay grade is exactly five percent more than one before that. And it's built with exactly one and a half percent between each step. So as you're moving up from B to C to D D. It's exactly one and a half percent. There's a sixty percent spread overall. And there's a fifteen percent spread from minimum to market, which in your case, you've identified step L. As the desired anchor to market. And so as we go forward, we want to utilize that in order to understand. The degree of competitiveness. So we're using your step L as the anchor. So there's fifteen percent to get you to step L and then there's thirty five percent beyond step L as far as the structure is concerned. So first thing we wanted to do was we wanted to take a look as to how you're utilizing your current structure. And we use a analysis that we've in the compensation profession have labeled comp ratio. And all that simply is, is actual pay divided by step L in your case, because that is the anchor to the external market. And you can see overall, the city is virtually at a hundred percent comp ratio. Which means you're paying exactly overall on average to your step L. You're dead on. As far as the application of current pay within the current structure. Another way to look at that is the actual distribution of employees by pay grade. And this was interesting for a couple of reasons. Number one is. We consider plus or minus seven and a half percent to be competitive. And so six fifty eight, almost sixty percent of your employees are within. A five step below and five step above or a very competitive range. Which is not surprising considering you are an overall hundred percent comp ratio. We would have expected that. But if you take one more grade on either side of that, you now have seventy percent of your employees. And so again. You're utilizing the structure well as far as where they're moving the individuals up through the structure. The other thing interesting we noted is the top ten grades, steps, sorry. The top ten steps have a total of seven employees. And so that's, keep that in mind as I go forward, just for a moment. The other thing we wanted to do is step back and take a look at where were the employees with more than twenty years' experience? And this is experience with the city and you can see the distribution of those twenty five individuals. It's not surprise. Most of them are step L and above. I'll point out, you have one individual who has fifty years' experience with the city. Another one forty nine years of experience, which is great to see these days. You hardly see that at all. But there is a a significant number of individuals above step L, which is where they should be as far as the. Length of experience with the city is concerned. So. When I first saw your structure, my first reaction was it's a little bit broader than I typically see. But when we drilled down a little bit, we found out that steps A through W, which are twenty three steps. Which has a forty percent spread, which is what more typically we see in public sector organizations. Those twenty three steps encompass a hundred and forty nine of your hundred and fifty four employees. And so in reality, the structure, although it is thirty three steps, we're really utilizing. Twenty three of those thirty three steps. And again, those twenty three steps, forty percent spread is what we typically see within this environment. So our conclusion is that the current structure, structure is an effective tool for the city as far as delivering base pay to its workforce. We did get received a hundred and ten job descriptions from the city. And we reviewed all those job descriptions. Job descriptions provide a summary of the role. It provides a major duties and essential functions of each role. It also provides the levels. Required of the seven compensable factors within each role. And this is important as far as the classification system or classification. Process within the city. And so the job descriptions we review were very comprehensive. It really provided this specificity we needed to go out and and match. The jobs to the external marketplace. So in that, in that way. The descriptions and the compensable factors, again, gave us enough information to take them to the external marketplace. Bolton utilizes a proprietary classification system built on what we call role and stream matrix. We use this as far as classifying jobs. The job and role matrix, in the city's case, we assigned. All of your jobs to fifteen different families. And a family is that, is again, there's a city and for us, within the classification, the family is the. Area that the job sits within. And so you have fifteen, our database actually has twenty seven different families or families that we just don't have here in the city. So all of the city jobs are assigned to fifteen of our families. We then looked at the level of the job as far as the level of responsibilities and duties. In your case, we assigned your management roles to four of the five roles available. The fifth role is simply because of size. There would be, you know, management roles for counties or cities bigger than you that would have a more. Broad level as far as the. Level of the job is concerned. Similarly, for exempt specialist, we assigned your jobs to four of the five levels. Support can, support individual contributors, technicians and operations. Again, we're assigned to levels within their own respective families. And I won't go through it, but exhibit one does in fact have. Every job within the city that we assign the levels and families to. We identified seventy six, well, first one, let me back up. Of the hundred and ten job descriptions, you have currently. Ninety seven distinct active roles. So there are some roles that were not active as far as. Current incumbents were concerned. Of those ninety seven roles, we identified seventy six for which we could get external market data. And that's how I gave us a high degree of confidence that in fact, if we could develop market data on seventy six of your ninety seven roles. That we felt very confident, in fact, that we could measure the market and tell you exactly where you were relative to the market. And tell you exactly where you were relative to that market. So again, I think that's a very, on the vast majority of your jobs. It wasn't just one here and there. It was on seventy six of your ninety seven jobs with current incumbents. So the important thing here is creation of what we call the public sector databases. We had, first off. We utilize our classification process, the families and levels. In looking at the market data, so we take the market data and we subject to our classification system. So then when we're comparing job to job, it's through our classification system. It's not just based upon titles. I think that's important distinction here, because sometimes titles can be a little deceiving as far as what the real role of the job. Is for one organization versus another. Again, we took all the seventy six of the. City Tacoma Parks jobs, put it through our classification system. We then use that same system with all the market data in order to make sure we have a valid comparison of job to job. We have two sources of information as far as market data is concerned. One of which is Bolton's Total Rewards Data Exchange. Most recent one was just performed in March of twenty two. And it contained data from twelve counties, Maryland counties. Of which we found six to be relevant to our analysis for Tacoma Park. And you can see them there. Similarly, there was a web-based collection compensation performed by the municipal league, Maryland, Maryland Municipal League. The municipal league, Maryland, Maryland Municipal League. And based upon the size and proximity to Tacoma Park. We were, we, we pulled information for seven of those. So altogether, we have market data for thirteen governmental entities. You know, in around different sizes, but geographically as close as we possibly could to Tacoma Park. Exhibit two, again, I won't go time through that individually, but exhibit two does provide the market data for each and every benchmark job. Now, what we did with that market data. Is we then took your step L and compared it to the fiftieth percentile. And the reason why that was a basis is in my discussions with council, my discussion with leadership. That was basically a consensus is we want to be an average payer. We want to be in the middle of the market. We want to be competitive. To the fiftieth percentile. Fiftieth percentile is that number that is in fact right in the middle of the market. And so we then took your step L and compared it to the market data. And what you see here is the percent off of step L from the market by pay grade. Okay, now remember, there are a number of jobs in each pay grade. So this is an average of how that pay grade is relative to comparable jobs in the marketplace. So overall, your step L is ninety three point six percent of the market. Which means you're six point four percent off the fiftieth percentile. Within our report, exhibit three does provide for each job for which we did gather market data. Compared to your step L, so you can go job by job by job if you show, so want to make that. Look, if you want to look at that yourselves. So I went fairly quickly, but I wanted to get to the recommendations and we have one primary recommendation. Which was the main objective for us to achieve in the study. And that is what to do with your structure, how to make sure your structure is in fact competitive to the external marketplace. And then you just saw it would take six point four percent to retain a fifty percentile market positioning. And so that's moving step L again overall to a fiftieth percentile market positioning, six point four percent. Now, to do that, because you have a step structure, to move the structure by six point four percent means. That it's an across-the-board increase by six point four percent. Now you have to do that because if you don't, then individuals are falling behind within the structure. You have this structure built, five percent between grades, one and a half percent between steps. And sort of order to maintain that relative position of where I as an incumbent am in a current structure. Versus a structure to project ahead, you have to move the incumbent the same percent that you move the whole structure. Okay, so that's one of the disadvantages of a step structure. It's when we move the structure forward, that same amount is required as far as the individual increases are concerned. So in the city, that looks like. In in an annualized ten point five percent million payroll annualized. It's about six hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. These numbers do not include pool employees, which you have a a number of within wi- within the city. And doesn't include um uh call-in jobs or as-needed jobs either. The other big thing it doesn't include would be um other costs that are. A factor of your base pay like overtime. Every dollar increase in base pay is a dollar and a half increase in overtime. Okay, so did not take that in consideration. So it's my understanding from um your, your previous, your prior HR director that we've already. That she had already or we have already included a five percent as far as a preliminary number within the budget. Again, if you wanted to achieve a fiftieth percentile market position, it requires six point four percent. So in essence, it's another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars above the preliminary five percent. So again, that was the primary recommendation, primary objective of our work. Is to figure out how much we have to move the structure forward to be competitive. I have a couple other what we've termed secondary um for your consideration. And while there was uh analysis found some variation by job as far as the degree of external competitiveness. It was interesting, your police leadership sergeants and above were almost all of them were consistently two grades to low to the market. And so one of our recommendations is uh considerations should be given. By Tacoma Park to review the current grade classifications for police leadership sergeants and above. Our second uh second secondary recommendation. Is um that Tacoma Park should consider um undertaking a comprehensive reclassification project. There's two, two-way, there's two. Ingredients of the compensation plan. First one is developing the internal hierarchy. That's what your classification project does. We look at job descriptions, we make sure the job descriptions accurately reflect a job. Then we apply a job classifications to those jobs for all jobs all at one time to make sure we have a calibration going. As far as the organization is concerned, as you progress up, it makes sense. As there's levels within a family, it makes sense. And so it's a one overall look as far as how the internal hierarchy of the jobs within the city are is created. Okay, and it's been, it's my understanding, it's been some time before. A comprehensive reclassification project has been undertaken. And so it's our recommendation that this be achieved before the next time. You bring me back in to do a similar project as far as calibrating to the external marketplace is concerned. Another recommendation, secondary recommendations we have is it's a little bit unusual in my experience. That we have a single structure that encompasses two different collective bargaining agreements as well as management employees. And so right now what's going on is every, anytime we change. The structure for one of those entities, it affects all three of the entities. And so our recommendation is to take your current structure and divide it into three. And there's three is a management structure, um a local four hundred structure and um. A structure for the other collective bargain agreement, ask me. And the reason we want to do that is, is right now it's serving us well. It makes a lot of sense, but as we go forward. It would give us more flexibility if one of those employee groups is moving faster or slower than the other employee groups. We can do what we need to as far as um recalibrating them to the external marketplace. Without necessarily having to do a hundred percent for all employees for all grades, okay? So we're, right now it's working. Again, before you bring me back in three years, my recommendation is we break them out. Same grade, same structure right now for ease of transition. Do the classification project to make sure we have all the grades and all the jobs correctly. Placed in the right grade, uh but again, separate them into their own structures, if you would. Within the organizations. Finally, I want to make comment on within the city charter, there's a specific. Warning as far as um annually what uh your city manager. Should bring as far as recommendations for a market adjustment is concerned. Historically, that may have worked well, but right now, given the pace of change. As far as the labor market is concerned, I got to tell you, I've been doing this for a number of years. I, I did not have gray hair when I first started as a comp consultant. But it's things we are seeing today I've never seen before. The pace of change is just unbelievable. I don't know how long it's going to keep up. But one of the things that we're seeing is historic look only does not tell us what the future may look like. And so right now, um within your charter, it speaks to um either conducting a market analysis as I have done. Or looking at um an employment cost index. Take a moment, employment cost index is a historic look. It's performed by Bureau Labor Statistics. It looks each historic quarter, the most recent one we have was for the first quarter of this year. It looks at benefits as well as wages. It will include commissions, it will include bonuses. And so it's not necessarily a predictor of what next year may look like, right? CPI, Consumer Price Index is a measure of inflation. It's a measure of how much. I have to spend at the grocery store this year versus last year to buy the same basket of goods and services. It is not a measure of what's happening to labor costs. It is not a measure of what's happening to. Organizations that can't find the entry-level jobs at fifteen dollars an hour. So we're gonna have to pay eighteen dollars an hour, or gonna have to pay twenty dollars an hour just to get entry employees to come to us. It is perhaps an indication of what might look like tomorrow. But there's not a direct correlation between CPI, ECI. What kind of wages we have to give out in order to get our employees here. One of the things that's out there are uh salary planning surveys each year that do go out. And look at what organizations are expecting for the coming year. So our recommendation is that the annual adjustment recommendation, taking a number of factors, not just one single index. Published by the Bureau. So I think that's it for me. So without questions?
Great, thank you. Um we'll start, who wants to start off? Councilmember Smith, you can start off. Oh, and I should say that um we will take some questions and Mr. Smith are asked me, uh union rep had requested um additional time. This evening, just to raise a few questions from um the union. So we'll go through council comments and questions and then save some time for Mr. Smith to come back. Mister, um this Mr. Smith, Councilmember Smith can go now.
Thank you for the presentation. Um it looks really good. So you, you said that uh your recommendation is uh the six point four percent. Increase, but you said it does not include the overtime leave programs benefit costs. Can you give us those numbers in a supplemental report so that. We can see the, the comprehensive number uh what this change will mean. I think that would be really helpful for the council.
Certainly, if we could get some of that information as far as percent of overtime within the organization. It's just a factor to apply to that, so sure, we could do that.
Thank you. And then looking into your crystal ball, you're saying that, you know, you've never seen, you know, the labor market like this. You know, we have a couple huge things that are happening right now. Unprecedented inflation and the possibility of a recession. Right, so how does that influence compensation? Maybe next year or two years from now?
I do not have a crystal ball. I have my opinion as a compensation consultant.
I appreciate your opinion.
And, and I try to read as much as I can and gather as much information as I can. One of the interesting things is there's a number of criteria that would define if we have a recession or not. One of the criteria is employment statistics. In fact, there's an increase in unemployment. Given the unemployment rates we have today, there are some. Uh authorities that believe that we will not see an increase to the extent that we have previously. As far as unemployment is concerned. Because everyone's still looking for as many, you know, to add to employees, everyone's still looking for. And so there's some thoughts that in fact, the pressure on wages will continue. Even though there may be quote-unquote a recession, which historically would say that the uh the unemployment would in fact. Help hold down pressure on wages in certain industries, but perhaps not others. So. I think we're five, four, three months away. Before we'd have a better handle on that, to be honest with you. And then give it a couple, two, three, four more months. And we'll know if we're in a recession or not. We're gonna know what's gonna happen as far as the inflation. I mean, in last month, it kinda. It went down a tick, right? Last month it did. So I just don't know. I think it's. It's too soon in the year to tell what next year is going to look like, to be honest. If I had that crystal ball, I'd use it, right? For sure. I'd sell that information for sure. All right, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you for the presentation tonight and the work that you put into this uh this evaluation. I just had a question, I believe during your presentation, you said that uh to. We are slightly below the market rates overall. And you were suggesting an across-the-board percentage increase, I think it was six point something uh increase, is that right?
Yes, six point four to retain a fiftieth percentile market position. Yes.
Okay, but you also mentioned that there were a number of employees, especially within the police department, that were at a. Grade that was uh not in line with the, the market also. My question is, if we, if we were to in. Move those employees to up a grade to be in the correct grade, wouldn't that in fact. Already start to uh compensate for that. Being below the market rate pay-wise, and so the amount that we would have to do for the rest of the employees would be less than the six point four percent.
I, I think the answer to that is you have a single structure now, and that structure was built. Five percent between each grade and one and a percent and a half between each step. And so right now we're moving the entire structure. My recommendation for the um police leadership is, and they need to be looked at. As far as what grade they are assigned to. And then evaluate where they should be as far as steps are concerned. We're gonna move the entire structure. But then separately, we're going to look at a handful of jobs to make sure they are appropriately assigned within the structure. And then once that's done, it's look at the individual within the staffs.
Thank you.
Great, um anything else, Councilmember Siemens?
No.
All right, Councilwoman Yersey.
Well, thank you so much. Um this has been very helpful and a learning opportunity for me. So I'm gonna get a little weedy, so bear with me. So I'm trying to think through the point about the variation and and I'm looking at the um. You know, we have some grades that are like seventy five, seventy four percent of, of that. Market fifty percent, um fifty percentile. And that six point um four is based on that overall weighted average. And so we have some that are over. And then we have some that are well below. And I'm trying to understand why we. Why we had to take the, I, I think I get why we had to take the overall. But if you could just explain to me again why we had to take the increase based on the overall weighted average. Instead of looking at perhaps what the um. Percent would be if we were to basically try to make each individual grade category whole.
Right, right. Well, the reason for that is you have a single structure.
Yeah.
And the structure is exactly five percent between each grade and exactly a percent and a half between each step. So that's what we have. Then we have a process where we've uh taken the time to assign each job to a grade. And so then we take the entire structure and try to see how that entire structure looks relative to if this external market. And the reason we have to take an overall is otherwise we're going to be looking to blow up your classification system. Or blow up the structure. So instead of having a single structure, we may then have individual structures. Every job having its own pay grade, right? And so um that's why our recommendation is to make sure. That before I come back in again in three years, we take a hard look at the classification because. One of the reasons a job may be under market, it's not at the proper grade level. One of the reasons a job may be over market, again, it's not at the proper grade level. There may be jobs here that we treat differently than any other governmental. Organization, which is fine, that's normal. There's normal, it's, it's usual that each. Organization, there's a handful of jobs that they treat differently for whatever reason, okay? But that's why we have to do the six point four percent and move in the entire structure today. But then let's take the time, make sure we have it calibrated correctly before we do this again. Otherwise, you're gonna have seventy six different pay ranges.
Right, 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 right. Okay, that makes sense. And so in theory, if we're thinking about this in the long term, we're talking about. A six point four percent overall to get that um weighted average up to one hundred percent of the fiftieth. um, weighted average up to one hundred percent of the fiftieth percentile. But then there are potential cost implications of when we actually reclassify positions, which might also bump people up.
Correct, or freeze them if they go down. I would expect jobs to go up and down.
Okay.
Okay, so it, when a job goes down, I would never advocate cutting pay necessarily, but they might be frozen. They may not get a step increase for a number of years because they're frozen. So those are all uh, uh, implications of the reclassification project that we have to consider.
And that make, that makes, I'm I'm getting it now, so just bear with me. Um, and so the um, the breaking of the um, the groups in terms of like the Ask Me in the Local Four Hundred, that also will help to provide us with more flexibility, so we don't find ourselves in a position like we have right now, where it's basically like, we have to do a one size fits all, or else it kind of blows up in our faces.
Correct. That's a half a step to get that flexibility. Yes.
Okay.
Taking the same structure as is divided into three entities is a step in that direction. Absolutely.
Okay. So can I just, so can I follow up? So I'm on page or slide fifteen. So if I'm hearing you correctly, like we took grade one oh seven, and that's at seventy-four point six percent of the fiftieth percentile. We wouldn't wanna, we shouldn't pull those folks up to a hundred percent because that would create havoc for the whole system, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't know if the reason why those individuals are so low is because they're over graded. If they were three, two grades too high, for example, that's a ten percent difference. I don't know that. Okay, that's what the classification project will tell us.
Is it possible for you to send us a paragraph that it, you know, explains that a little bit more work with staff, because I think that is something, a number of us, when we looked at this, because I think a number of years ago, when we did something similar, I can't believe, I can't remember if you did it, or or I think a precursor did. One of the things that it found was, we were really low on the lower end of our pay scales. We put in a three to five year plan and did all that. And I think some of us had that in our head as we were anticipating um, this. So it's helpful to understand the structure and what needs to happen, and then what needs to happen for us to move more towards understanding classification.
Sure.
But I think I will not be able to say it the way you did. And it would be helpful to have that written out because um, to be able to refer back to, so we're not calling you a lot.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Seersi, did you have more? You're good?
Nope, that that would be helpful.
It would be. Uh, Councilwoman Dabala.
Well, that was the area I wanted to ask about, so we might be pretty close to done here. Um, so to continue, so for example, picking on for grade one oh seven, so increasing individuals in that grade by steps is probably not enough steps to bring that up, because the steps are only one and a half percent each. So you'd have to change the grade of the positions, or could you do it through negotiation through steps? You you with me?
No, I'm sorry. There's a, there's a job in grade at one oh seven, that you had a process previously that said, this job is a grade one oh seven in Tacoma Park structure, okay?
And yet we find that those jobs that are graded one oh seven are significantly under market in this market.
Correct.
So what are the choices? We could wait for the market to level out. Well, I don't hear anybody saying that. We could reclassify, change the grade.
Correct.
Look at reclassifying and changing the grade. Could we also address it through us, through step increases for those?
No, because I looked at step L, which is the market.
Right.
And so their market is at percent. The individual could be above step L.
Uh huh.
So grades one oh seven, could I, could we?
Is sanitation technician.
So go back to the that I have to back up.
Maybe we should pick another category that has more.
Yeah, but let me try to explain something very quickly. Am I doing this wrong? Go back to like, if we could, and there we go, now. Okay, I'm getting it. I got, here we go. Okay, here's the one I want. So grade one oh seven that you spoke to, step L is below market. See that?
Yeah.
All the individuals in one or seven are paid above step L.
Right.
So you're, the individuals are probably paid okay relative to the market.
Okay.
It's the grade itself.
Alright.
Is behind the market. You have individuals being paid above market. So the person may be okay, the job is not. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So in order to understand should it be a grade one oh seven or not, that's a classification project. And then what should be the midpoint for that job is, it would be the second part. That's what I'm doing. Okay?
Okay.
But in 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 case of one oh seven, you pick on that one. They may be above market. Go to grade one fifteen, and I don't know what jobs are in one fifteen. But you got a couple of them, individuals that um, step A and B, see that?
Yeah.
Brand new hires, probably. Brand new to the organization. We also have individuals that are in gray in steps S, is that an S? You see where the other individual, those individuals are gonna be forty percent higher as far as their pay is concerned. Which hopefully those are twenty-year employees who've done long service to the organization.
Or if you look at grade one thirteen, because it happens that that's eighty-six percent of market at L, and thirteen's got, most of those folks are below that.
There's only three of them.
Right, and two of the three are below L.
So the market, so the job is below market, and two of the individuals are paid less than market. But are they brand new? A-again, it, there's, there's multiple steps that we have to undertake. Okay, in 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 the first step is to make sure that it's calibrated. It's, th-then again, the recommendation is, let's go do classifications to make sure all the jobs are in the right grades. And then when I'm back in in three years, I can address some of these issues that you just spoke to.
So my con- my concern clearly is, is one that some of my other colleagues have mentioned, which is that a wholesale increase the entire structure, six and a half, uh, six and a half percent is, is more money than we've got.
Yes, it is.
We budgeted less is
Yes.
a reason. Um, so I was trying to think of ways, again, as everybody else has said, to honor individual grades or per job categories that are underpaid, particularly at the lower end without lifting the entire structure up.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not gonna work. It's not gonna work given this design. It just won't work. What we have to do is seventy-six individual
Yeah.
grades, basically, or seventy-six markets.
And my other question on the recommendations before I I yield to the next person um, is give me a moment, just lost it. Do we know? Well, we do know, can we get uh, some kind of breakdown that says um, where which positions are in which union, therefore which grades are most appropriate? Like, the breakout you gave us with the three structures suggests that we know that everything below a certain numbers in one union and everything above a certain numbers in another union, do we know that? If we don't know that, can we get that info sorted out? You with me? Okay, thank you. Okay, so it is already union check, as it were. I don't mean by the union, I mean in in terms of the membership of the unions. The the positions assigned to the union, that's what I meant. Okay, so Local Four Hundred is those steps, uh, those grades, excuse me. And Ask Me is those grades, and, okay, thank you.
That, yeah, that's it. Okay, Councilwoman Kostik.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and this discussion. It's answered a lot of my questions, so I really appreciate it. Um, I guess my question is really just what the reclassification process looks like and how often we typically do that, and and if we are doing sort of what we need to be doing to make sure that long-term we're, we're set up for success.
Um, typically, you're gonna do that five years or so, because most of the jobs we will not change that often. Uh, you do have a process in place that when a single job changes, and in fact, it can be looked at individually. Um, which you do do now. Um, my recommendation is to take a step back and do the entire city all at once. And you do that in order to make sure everything's calibrated as you go up and down. Five years, six, seven years, it's not something you do that frequent at all. But because, again, jobs for the most part, the majority of jobs will not change significantly in a year or two years. Individually, a job could, most jobs do not.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, um, Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, and and thanks for the presentation and all the information. Just got a couple of questions, and and maybe you can give me some direction on it. So first off, just the dollar figures, and I don't know if this is something you would have or the staff could provide for us separately, but the, the amounts, this is just salary and doesn't include benefits, the the dollar figures that are cited there.
Correct.
So when, when we say there's another hundred and fifty-one thousand, if we were to uh, regularize everybody up to the six point four percent level, other than that, the few smaller ones you mentioned, uh, that that would cost an extra hundred fifty-one thousand, there would be some other number higher than that to cover the benefits as well, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, and so we'll, we'll, maybe we can just request, uh, man, we'll get that separately from from the staff. So, um, one of the things that just uh, concerns me a little bit, and this relates to the earlier discussion about the reclassification, and and do we want to zero in on some of the ones that are at the lower level? So we did talk about a few years ago, and we tried to maintain this, um, the the notion that there would be a minimum, minimum level of dollars below which no full-time employee would be paid. And, you know, the concept there, of course, is that people aren't, people's pay isn't a grade, people's pay is dollars, right? And so if things are costing more, then maybe there's an argument for for doing that. So, um, are we potentially in a position today, given the inflationary pressures that we're seeing, and then inflation seems to be not just a blip, where we ought to consider bumping up the the floor that we have established below which we won't pay in full-time.
I understand it to be forty thousand dollars a year for full, full-time. You are adhering to that. There are no full-time employees who are currently individually making less than that. I think that number is appropriate at this time. Okay, I don't, I don't know if there's necessarily a need to raise that as far as a minimum floor is concerned. The market will tell us what the job is worth um, as far as above that amount. If a job is in fact worth above that amount, the market will tell us that. As far as individuals are concerned, I think that's an appropriate level to set as far as a bar that the city believes, um, we need to be above that level for full-time employees. I think that's an appropriate level right now.
Um, and just really more of an observation, it's not about what, what you were saying as much as just how the economy works. So my understanding is that at the moment, the unemployment rate is really low. And, you know, you mentioned maybe we'll learn more about what's going to happen over the coming months, but it is it just strikes me that in order to address inflation, which affects everybody, the one tool that we're seeing being used by the Federal Reserve is to raise interest rates, which okay, will slow things down in the economy, which will make it harder for many types of businesses to do as much. And that means that maybe the unemployment rate will go higher. So it just seems like, and again, this is not so much relevant to this compensation study, and I know it's getting late in the evening here for for this kind of comment, but th- there's something missing in how we handle the economy when the answer to inflation is there was increase unemployment, which means it's probably gonna be for lower-income people. So it's just discouraging that that's sort of one aspect of this that we have to deal with. And again, not that it's directly relevant to these decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember K. Um, I just had a a couple of questions. The most of my questions have been asked already, but um, you know, some things that um, folks may ask, um, I just wanted to ask it. The methodology that you use, similar to other jurisdictions that you've done compensations studies for, are there any differences that in terms of how this study was done?
No.
Okay.
No, again, we use our, we utilize our classification system whenever we do a study such as this, and it's the same classification system um, for public sector, private sector. It is our our system that be utilized. So it it is very consistent that way.
Great. And I was curious, just on the data that was used, just looking at it, that um, the city of Rockville wasn't included. Did they not provide the information?
We tried to gather as much as we could from as many as we could. It was, that was the ones we got.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, did you wanna?
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, so some of the uh, the early charts that Scott showed, and and you saw uh, folks above, some of that could be some of the longevity that's a staff, so I just wanna just put that out there as well. Um, and then I think Councilmember Kostik uh, raised the question about how long the classification process typically, uh, in best practice in local government, it could take anywhere six to nine months for the entire process. From the time that you appropriate and approve, and we have a consultant on board, six to nine months is typically um, for the classification process. Um, and and then I just wanna just raise, so what what we're talking about and what what Scott has shared in his report, um, yes, a total of six point four percent. You've already appropriated five percent in the budget for fiscal year twenty-three, so what we're talking about is one point four percent. And when we look at, a- taking in consideration some of the items that Scott didn't have in in his presentation, uh, that additional one point four percent equates to about an additional hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Um, and then when we look at um, the ten percent for uh, the police leadership and PD, um, that's, that's about uh, fourteen positions in about a hundred and forty-one thousand. So when you, when you look at, um, there are a lot of items that could be addressed, the low hanging fruit here is, is addressing those two to be able to bring uh, those positions into market um, using the step L. And so what council would be faced with is just an additional three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, essentially. Give or take.
Um, terrific, well, I sorry, not counting benefits and all of the other.
That includes benefits. A lot of the benefits won't change. It it may be some, some life, health benefits tweak here and there, but that, that's inclusive.
Okay, thank you. Hi, um, alright, uh, Scott, if you don't mind sticking around, just in case if Mr. Smith had a question that it'd be easier than emailing you or calling you tomorrow morning. So, uh, Brendan, if you wanna ask your questions?
Um, it might be easier just for me to kind of present sort of what my concerns are. I know you said I could have up to ten minutes. I promise someone took that long. Um, from our standpoint, this is not a fair or equitable way to to conduct this study. Um, you've got especially um, employees on the lower end of the pay scale. It has been noted, it's up to twenty-five percent low um, below the market average, and we're suggesting that, and then others who are at or above the market average, and we're suggesting that six point four percent a six point four percent increase makes sense for everybody, when clearly it doesn't. That's just going to continue the inequities that already exist, but just slightly bumping people up. The prior uh, market study that was done three years ago actually separated out the positions, which now is saying it's impossible to do, um, and looked at each one, analyzed which each one, and said, this position needs to go up this amount, this one needs to go that amount, this one's fine. And so there's no clear reason about why that couldn't be done now. Um, there's, if, if the increases need to be done in one point five percent increments as far as the steps, then that could be done as well. Um, the other issue is that we're conflating two different um wage issues. One is the annual wage negotiation relating to cost of living. Um, and then this is a totally separate issue, so we're currently in wage negotiations offering um, seven point three percent, which is below the CPI, current CPI of eight point six percent. It matches the city council's commitment to protect renters uh, at the same rate as the rent control ordinance. That relates to inflation, to the annual cost of living, so the annual wage negotiations we do. It has nothing to do with a three-year study that's conducted just because it's a requirement of our collective bargaining agreement. So to try to conflate the two and just say, we're gonna just tack on one point four percent to a five percent offer that the labor that our union hasn't agreed to anyway, essentially negates the point of even doing this wage study. So, I mean, and then the other problem, I guess, is we, we wanted to share all our concerns on these issues throughout this process. We repeatedly asked the city manager to be able to meet with Bolton as we had met with the organizational, with Matrix, with that contractor, and had a good discussion with them. And we weren't allowed to do that. So then we contacted the city council um, last March, raised these issues, and that was ignored again. So if you look at, see, um, you've got twenty-three percent of employees following, falling below the um, seven and a half percent market rate. So you've got one in four employees on page, um, sorry, page five, who, if you give them six point four percent, they're still going to be way off. You've got a third of employees with twenty years' experience still below market average, which um, I think points to the survey that the um, organizational study did, where they noted that only one I think fifty-four percent of city employees said they saw a future working here. Then the, as far as the actual employee positions that are analyzed, which is what you need to look at if you're going to do a wage study, on page twelve, uh, twenty-two percent of the actual employee positions were never analyzed, so we don't even know where they're supposed to fall because they weren't found. They, Bolton did not look at those specific positions to see what the actual market rate should be for them. I mean, people have already pointed out with the gray levels, some are twenty-five percent below, some are up to a hundred and nine percent above, so that, that's a huge, huge range. Um, page seventeen, if, if you do this this over-the-board increase, you've got the ten employees in the top three grades making more than the thirty-four employees in the bottom six grades. We had repeatedly said that there needed to be um, the actual job, I know we're talking about a job reclassification, but that those issues needed to be addressed as part of this wage study. The prior contractor sent out a very detailed survey to people, asking them what their actual job duties were so that they could consider, well, what's the accurate apples-to-apples comparison as far as job titles? None of that was done this time. Um, so again, we don't necessarily have an accurate comparison. Um, and then on our collective bargaining agreement, uh, specific to the um wage study, four out of the eight cities uh, that are specifically required in our contract uh, weren't included in this analysis. So those are some of sort of the issues that we have. This is one of the issues, um, I mean, the way it says, part of the current negotiations that we have with the city going on right now, and so from our standpoint, the study's gonna need to be reworked so that it actually is equitable and fair, especially to lower-paid employees, and that we actually look at what's the accurate amount to raise people salaries. Some people, it's going to be much more than six point four percent, and some it isn't. Um, but that issue is separate from the annual wage uh, negotiation we're doing now. If, if other cities were at the average, we bring them the average, those people aren't just not getting a raise this year. If that makes sense, it's two different things, and somehow the city's trying to just say, oh, we'll save some money, and we'll just do one extra one point four percent, and then we're done with it. So in any case, those are our concerns, and we hope that they will be um, considered and that the wage study will be uh, reworked. Thank you.
Thank you, Smith. Um, anyone else have any questions or comments? For this evening, Councilman Dibala?
Yeah, I do have one, which is, um, I looked back in twenty nineteen and eighteen, and what we did last time, because I was having a little trouble remembering, and it says that it was a a compensation and classification study. So my question, not for tonight, but I would appreciate the answer from one of you, whether the classification study that we're talking, we're talking about today, is that the kind of thing that was done as part of the compensations, uh, excuse me, yeah, as part of the compensation study. In other words, did we do two things at the same time last?
In, 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 in the, in, last time in two thousand and nineteen, um, by Management Advisory Group, what was set out in RFP was two, basically, two initiatives in one, where you had the compensation and classification. What we uh, request in RFP is just pay equity, looking at wages
Right.
because we were in negotiations with our labor partners, and we needed that part of the budget piece. We didn't do the classification, and, and that's what Scott is recommending before the next uh, study is done, or the next three years, to do that piece, and, and that will address some of the items that Mr. Smith uh, spoke to from the Ask Me leadership.
Right, yeah, so last time we did two things at the same time, now we're talking about doing them in sequence. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Dibala for raising that and bringing that up. Any other comments or questions? This evening, Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Seaman? All right, no, I'm not seeing any. Um, thank you again, uh, Scott, uh, for coming this evening and uh, presenting. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for raising the concerns of the union. And um, thank you to our, our city manager, Deputy City Manager, for their work, and uh, like I said, we will not have a council meeting next week because it is the fifth uh, Wednesday of June. Uh, we will resume um, after the Fourth of July holiday on July sixth, and uh, hope to see everyone at the parade and festivities. So, thank you, everyone. Uh, we are adjourned. Good evening.